All right, well, good afternoon. My name is Cameron Burks and I'm this year's Vice Mayor. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at four o'clock and let the record show that council members Mitchell and Anderson are present. Mayor Taffin and Councilmember Sampson have recused for this session for reasons previously stated. On to item number three, the adoption of the agenda. I believe the city attorney has a comment to make about the agenda.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Burks and members of the council. On the consent calendar, item E, which is the settlement and release agreement between the city, Save Lafayette O'Brien Land Company, and Mr. Garfunkel regarding attorney's fees and other expenses, the recommendation is not receive and file, it's to authorize execution. So we're suggesting that you actually pull that from the consent calendar with that revised recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
On that agenda item, are you going to restate that when the two other council members join us?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Councilmember Anderson, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so we move on to item number four, old business, and this is our community meeting regarding PG&E performance and safety concerns. And why don't I maybe just kick it off here with a few comments and we'll get right into it. So before we get started, actually, maybe, I think the first thing I'd like to do is for our guests from PG&E and the CPUC to perhaps introduce themselves, maybe state your title, and maybe just give us a brief idea of what your role is with your two organizations. It'd be great.
Good afternoon, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Council, Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Mitchell, and the residents of City of Lafayette. My name is Sumit Singh, and I'm the Vice President of our gas operations, portfolio management, and engineering organization. And I'm responsible for the oversight of our community pipeline safety initiative.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you for having us here today. My name is George Carcasus. I am the Director of Transmission Integrity Management, and I am responsible for the integrity management of the natural gas transmission system within PG&E's service territory. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Christine Kousert. I'm the Senior Director of Asset Management and System Operations at PG&E, and my role is to oversee all asset management and integrity management activities for all of our gas system at PG&E.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Navid Pedar with the CPUC News and Outreach Office. I'm here with my colleague Lee Palmer.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Lee Palmer. I'm the Deputy Director for the Safety Enforcement Division. In my role as the Deputy Director of SED, I oversee the Office of Utility Safety, which includes both gas and electric utilities.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me make a few comments, and then I'll ask my peers here, my colleagues, to chime in as well if they have any questions, but just a bit of background before we get started. Just to restate the goals and the objectives of the meeting, which I think are important, and we've talked a little bit about these in previous sessions, but I have done this on several occasions, but tonight is an opportunity for PG&E and the PUC to voluntarily appear before the people of Lafayette and the City Council with the objective of building public trust in the area of pipeline safety. This public meeting is meant to be global in nature, all things safety-related associated with PG&E's operated pipeline infrastructure, not focusing solely on any one current initiative. So again, tonight is about building trust. It's not to talk about the future of current applications or current initiatives, and I'm going to keep us on track in that regard. The meeting is not intended in any way to be a mechanism for the city to imply requests or direct action on the part of PG&E. It's PG&E's responsibility, as our public utility, to ensure the people of Lafayette are safe, vis-à-vis their operated gas pipeline infrastructure. And as I've said before, and I think hopefully we see tonight, this is an opportunity for PG&E to bring their experts, their foremost experts and leaders, to the table to answer questions and concerns that have been provided to them in advance, approximately 150, and an opportunity for them to repair what has been, what I believe in some of the community have been, very uneven engagement with the community over the past several months. And I would like to thank PG&E for providing written responses to those 150 questions. We received those last Friday, and those are posted on our website and I believe in the agenda packet that went out in advance of this meeting. Residents have voiced their concerns that PG&E has been overwhelmingly lacking in clarity and consistency, explanation of methodology, and overall professionalism, which has led to a deterioration of PG&E's credibility and confidence regarding safety in our community. Let me be really clear here. When I called for this meeting, it was my hope that it would build and enable a new level of trust, transparency, and confidence between the people of Lafayette and PG&E in the area of safety. And importantly, I think most importantly, and this is something I want to emphasize, serve as a catalyst for follow-on, more functional and effective engagement between PG&E and our community. We've heard clearly the dissatisfaction in many of, in our community around how PG&E has recently communicated with our residents, and I'm personally very thankful to those who brought their concerns to us so we could take action and have this meeting tonight. I appreciate PG&E's voluntary willingness and the PUC's voluntary willingness to appear before us in our public tonight. Both were under no obligation to do so, so I very much thank you for spending your time with us tonight. A word on the PUC. The PUC's presence was a critical objective of mine, as it establishes, in my opinion, an important factor of accountability tied to PG&E's responses to our community's questions and concerns tonight. So thank you very much for being here. We in this community, not the City Council, nor the staff, and not the general public, we are not pipeline safety experts. PG&E holds its responsibility and authority granted by the state, and we depend on you, PG&E, and your regulators, the PUC, to ensure that our community remains safe. And I would kindly ask that after tonight, and this is my sincere hope, that you do engage differently with our public. So one thing I would like to note, in the staff report that many of you have read, in the light of PG&E's authorities in this space and as stated as we have in the staff report, this meeting is only intended to facilitate the residents' concerns with direct communication to PG&E and the CPUC. The City Council will not be taking any position on these issues or action, nor are the comments from the meeting intended to limit or restrict PG&E's responsibilities. I would encourage my colleagues, as I will tonight, to again, not make any comments that could be perceived as suggesting operational action on the part of PG&E. We as a body are here to facilitate engagement between the public and our speakers tonight. So before I transition into the format very briefly, I just want to pause and ask my colleagues if they have any statements before I move on.
I do need to disclose, on Saturday I had a telephone conversation with Mr. Dawson.
Okay.
No statements.
Okay, great. Let me quickly transition to format, just so everybody's clear how it's going to work tonight. Per our August 13th meeting, when the three of us were here, we directed staff to request that the CPUC identify, if they would, the top 10 questions or concerns identified by our community out of those 150. The CPUC respectfully declined this request, which we completely understand, so we will move forward with the format as agreed upon by the three of us on the 13th, which is the following. We're going to, I'll start by asking the PUC if they would like to make an opening statement. And from there, I will then invite PG&E to present to the public and the council responses to the questions and concerns submitted by the community, the catalog of questions and concerns. Once finished, I will then invite the public to comment. So we do have yellow speaker slips, and Mr. Wolf is in the front seat here from our staff that can collect those. Each individual speaker will be limited to three minutes or a total of six minutes maximum if seated, an additional three minutes by someone in the audience, just like we do it in every other city council meeting. I'll then invite PG&E to respond once public comment has concluded. I'll invite PG&E to respond to public comment and questions as they feel appropriate. It is PG&E's prerogative and how they want to respond, but I would hope that they respond directly and transparently. And I will ask PG&E to make a final statement. I'll then turn to the PUC again and ask if they would like to make a final statement, and you are free to interject at any time during tonight. I'll bring the session then back to the City Council and ask if there are any questions or comments from the council as we wrap up, and then we will adjourn and move on to the next item. We do have a hard stop at 7:00 PM, so we've got about three hours or so, as we do have additional City Council business to attend to when the mayor and councilmember Sampson arrive. I will ask, let me end by just saying, I will ask the staff to send the full minutes of the meeting, once approved, to PG&E and CPUC, both the folks that are here tonight and their leadership, and to the news media if requested. Those, of course, will be available to the public as well on our website. And tonight, please note that the city is actually video recording this session tonight. And the video will be posted, I believe, on YouTube? Is that the plan? Okay. As early as tomorrow, and we'll get that link out as soon as we can. This is sort of a test for us, but something that we wanted to do tonight. So with that, I think from that, councilmembers Mitchell and Anderson, if you have any comments?
Sounds good.
I do have a question for our city attorney. I'm sure my fellow council members feel, as I do, that the health and safety of our neighbors here in Lafayette is a primary concern. So my question for you is, what is the city's role in this discussion this evening? I think the Vice Mayor started to address that. And two, it relates to two different aspects. One is the public lands, and two is private lands. I was wondering if you could help me out there.
Sure. I think, as I understand from the Vice Mayor, the intent of this meeting was to discuss a variety of issues, not just one particular matter. But specifically, it is not our intent to direct PG&E to do or not do anything. We do have certain requirements as it relates to tree removal that we have an existing agreement with, but we are not limiting or inhibiting any of PG&E's responsibilities or requirements.
Okay. And are we looking at this differently for public lands versus individual, private lands, our neighbors' homes, et cetera, that may be impacted by this?
We don't necessarily have any ability to regulate the private lands, other than potentially, I'm just thinking of our tree removal permit process. I don't know if you were thinking of other potential projects.
No, that's it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Bye. Okay, so we'll go ahead and get started, and I would invite PG&E, or I'm sorry, the CPUC, if you would like to make an opening statement. You may, if not, that's fine.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon again. My name is Lee Palmer. I'm the Deputy Director for the Safety and Enforcement Division with the California Public Utility Commission. The CPUC not only ensures compliance with safety laws and regulations, but also challenges itself and the utilities to excellence. Ultimately, we strive to achieve a goal of zero accidents and injuries across all the utilities and businesses we regulate and within our own workplace as well. In my role as the Deputy Director of the Safety Enforcement Division, I oversee the Office of Utility Safety, which has the primary mission to provide leadership in the energy and utilities industry, and to develop, implement, and enforce best-in-class safety programs. Within the Office of Utility Safety, the Gas Safety and Reliability Branch, or GSRB, enforces federal and state natural gas and liquefied petroleum gas regulations by ensuring that California interstate gas pipeline systems are designed, constructed, operated, and maintained according to applicable safety regulations. Inspectors are trained and certified by the Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration, or FEMSA. In accordance with FEMSA requirements, our inspectors spend over a third of their time in the field inspecting and evaluating infrastructure. Additionally, the CPUC itself is audited annually by FEMSA to ensure we ourselves are maintaining the highest standards possible. SED staff has the technical knowledge and firsthand experience of infrastructure in the field. The core of SED's work is compliance and enforcement, but our impact goes far beyond that. The challenges facing the state require SED to not only ensure that infrastructure is safe and to code compliant today, but to also think about tomorrow and how we can better ensure safety in the future. As California works to adapt to climate change, manage a rapidly expanding population, and rebuild an aging utility infrastructure, the CPUC recognizes the impacts utility safety may have on the local communities and the environment. As such, we appreciate the opportunity to be here today. The Pipeline Safety Trust says it best, safety is like a three-legged stool between industry, regulators, and the public, as we each serve a vital function in ensuring pipeline safety. If any leg of that stool falters, pipeline safety is at risk. We strive to maintain open lines of communication with local governments, private citizens, and regulated utilities, with the end goal of providing a safe and reliable service to the citizens of California. We are committed to safety and to mitigating the impacts to consumers of safety initiatives as much as possible. Again, thank you for the opportunity to be here today, and we look forward to the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Okay, I'll go ahead and turn it over to PG&E.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, and Councilmember Mitchell, and the residents of the community of City of Lafayette. On behalf of PG&E, thank you for having us here tonight. I really appreciated your comments, Mr. Vice Mayor, Mr. Lee Palmer from CPUC, because from PG&E's perspective, our goals are completely aligned. And I also appreciate you highlighting that there's an opportunity for us to have additional direct and transparent communications, and if that didn't hit the mark for all of the engagement with this respective city, we take ownership of that, which is why we're here today. Our fundamental core principles include ensuring we are transparent in all that we do, and more importantly, why we're doing it. And the focus of our conversation here today is to share with you the work that's being done by more than 24,000 employees, 24/7, 365 days a year, to ensure the continued safety and reliability of both of our gas and electric systems. I can assure you that there's nothing more important to us than the safety of our customers and communities we have the privilege to serve. Many of our employees and their families also call Lafayette home. We care about the community and take seriously our responsibility to keep everyone who lives here safe. Because everyone who lives here is not just our customers. There are families, there are friends, and there are communities that we have the privilege of being a part of. And I thank the residents of Lafayette of speaking up where we haven't hit the mark in regards to our communications, and giving us this forum and this opportunity to have a candid dialogue about pipeline safety. And Mr. Palmer said it best, of the three-legged stool between the regulators, the public, and the operators, because all three have to come together. Before I talk about the focus that we have had in gas operations, and what led to the watershed moment that occurred on September 9th of 2010, where a pipeline explosion in the city of San Bruno resulted in eight fatalities in a community that was completely decimated. I want to share with you why safety is important to me personally, before I talk about the journey that we've been on in gas operations to be the safest, most reliable gas company in the nation. I've been in this company for 16 years, 14 of which have been in gas operations. And there was one day and one question from a five-year-old that changed my perspective on what safety means, and what is it that we do each and every day as a PG&E employee? Because it's not a job, it's a fiduciary responsibility. And that question came from a five-year-old. And that five-year-old was part of a family that I met with after the San Bruno incident. Their family immigrated to the San Bruno community two years before the tragic incident occurred. From the same part of the world that I'm born in, which is north part of India, a state called Punjab, they had immigrated to that community 30 miles away from where I was born. And the reason I was there was because English was their second language, and we were meeting with all of our residents and customers in that community who were impacted by that incident. We had a two-hour session in that meeting, a mother, a father, 18-month-old, five-year-old, and grandparents from both sides that lived in that house before the house was completely leveled, when the San Bruno incident occurred. After a two-hour discussion, and in that discussion, the family walked me through, second by second, of how they escaped the explosion and the fireball that was headed, right for them and for their house. After the two-hour discussion, all the things that we told them, and the things that we're doing for them, housing subsidiary, lodging subsidiary. The five-year-old comes to me and asks me one question, because the last image that he had before walking into that conference room was the image of his grandfather, who was in the ICU because of third-degree burns. And he asked me, in our native language, called Punjabi, "What are you doing to fix my grandfather, because I want to play with him again?" I got a four-year-old at home, I got a 10-year-old, and I can tell you, every morning I wake up, I kiss my son goodbye, and I go to work, I see the five-year-old's face in him. Every time I come home, most nights when he's sleeping, kiss him goodnight, I see the face of the five-year-old in him. This is why the residents and you that are sitting here are not our customers. You're our family, our friends, and members of our community. It's important for me to share that with you, because safety is personal for me. And safety is personal for every member of PG&E. So if we go to the next slide, thank you, Christine. So if we go back and reflect on the watershed moment of September 9th of 2010, the journey that we began with a laser focus on being the safest, most reliable gas company in the nation. As we embarked on that journey, we established three key pillars as part of our safety management And those three legs of the Safety Management System tool and framework consist of asset management, safety culture, and process safety. And we looked to third-party, independent reviewers to stress-test the programs and the framework that we put in place. And the framework that we used for asset management was based on an international standard called ISO 55001. And this standard is not unique to natural gas pipeline operators. The standard is really for companies and industries that manage a large asset base, not unlike PG&E. And the framework provides a rigorous method by which we identify what assets do we own, what are the characteristics of the assets, what's the geospatial location of the assets, what's the condition of the assets? Because all of those are key inputs to having a good, sound asset management process, which is, what are the risks, what are the top risks, and how do we go about mitigating those And to put some things in context, on the gas operations side, we own and operate nearly 80,000 miles of underground gas infrastructure in our service territory. Putting 80,000 miles in context, it's the distance that's more than three times around the world. And those 80,000 miles of infrastructure contain a pressurized, flammable natural gas that traverses that 80,000 miles. That's what we talk about when we talk about the volume of assets. The 80,000 miles are spread out over our 72,000 square mile service territory. Put that in perspective, it's equivalent to, or larger than, 33 of the states in this And this framework allows us to put a structure and a sound methodology on our asset and risk management approach. And as part of this process, we brought in an entity from the UK called Lloyd's Register to independently validate our practices and the implementation of our practices. And they actually certified us back in 2014 in our asset management practices. And we were the first utility in this nation to become certified against the international asset management standard. And it's not a one-and-done, because they come back every six months to continue to validate that we're continuously improving and are committed and are making progress against the commitments and our practices. And we've continued to maintain the certification for our asset management practices. The next leg of the stool is safety culture. And safety culture is all about the hearts and minds of our 24,000 employees within the organization and our contractors that are an extension of our workforce. and our contractors that are an extension of our workforce. For our safety culture, we look to a framework that was issued by the American Petroleum Institute called 1173, which is a pipeline safety management standard that was put forward by a cross-functional group that consisted of the federal regulator, the state regulator that was represented, many different operators, at the heels of a recommendation that was put forward by the National Transportation Safety Board. And for those that may not know what NTSB or National Transportation Safety Board does, they investigate some of the large transportation-related incidents that occur in our nation, whether it's pipeline-related, whether it's airline-related. They focus on a fact-based investigation and put forward recommendations that can help improve the overall safety performance of the industry. And we went forward using a third party to validate the practices against this standard. And we achieved the first certificate of compliance as the first operator in the US against this standard, back in 2015. And this, again, is not a one-and-done. And the pipeline safety management standard is very akin to the safety management systems that have been implemented in the nuclear industry and the airline industry.
I have a question for the Vice Mayor. Do we have a specified amount of time for opening statements?
What I will do is keep an eye on the clock and seeing how many people are in the room. We've talked previously maybe about forty-five minutes to an hour or so on PG&E's part, and then maybe an hour or so from the public comment part. And we have an hour or so for them to provide responses, if that's okay with you. That's what I'm thinking at this point.
Well, Mr. Singh's making a very good statement about the overall situation PG&E is, which I appreciate, and I read a lot of information about that. This is a family situation here, and we have a lot of people here who waited a long time to say something about their concerns related to operations locally. So I'm a little concerned that an hour of, you know, describing NTSB and what it does and all these other things is not really going to make too many people happy, considering the issues at hand. If you don't mind, for me, I would really appreciate kind of a more truncated approach and to recognize that this community has some real problems that they're concerned about, and that's what we'd like to express to you. And I know you've won a lot of awards, and you guys are great, and I've read a lot of stuff about you, and you're amazing organization, but we have had some problems, and that's why we're really here. So Vice Mayor, I know you're running this meeting. I'm just feeling a little bit like this can be kind of off-topic. We really do have an interest in trying to get some things addressed locally.
So it's a good point, I understand. I think maybe if PG&E could, again, the way we've set this meeting up is we have not dictated or given PG&E any direct parameters. And we're going to let them, ultimately speak to what they want to speak to, but I would remind them that we had a hundred and fifty questions that were submitted by our public. So to your point, Councilman Aaron, I think it's a good point. And I believe you're going to get to it perhaps sooner rather than later, specifically answering those questions and concerns, if you could do that.
Sure, happy to. I'll move it along at a much more rapid pace. I appreciate the feedback. And with everything said, I just want to be clear, we're not perfect. And that's not the message that I want to leave you here with. This is why we're here today, and we're open to your input and your feedback. The last point I'll make is, if you go to the next slide, and as I reflect on some of the questions that the community had on the hundred and fifty questions, a lot of the questions focused on are the things that we're doing part of the federal regulations or they're part of the state code. The one point I just want to emphasize here is when you look at the federal regulatory requirements, and they say this, they're the minimum pipeline safety requirements. And we don't look at the regulations as the ceiling, we look at them as the floor. And in fact, that's been codified as well with the quote up there that I'll leave you with, with Senate Bill 705, which really talks about, "Each gas corporation in the state of California shall develop a plan for the safe and reliable operation of its commission-regulated gas pipeline facility, and the plan shall be consistent with best practices in the gas industry and with federal pipeline safety statutes." So some of the practices that we have and are following exceed the regulatory requirements. And that's consistent with our mission, being the safest, most reliable gas company in the nation. So with that, I'll pass it on to my colleague Christine Kousert, so she can get into a little bit more details of how we manage the risks on our transmission system, then be more specific about the transmission system within the city of Lafayette.
Thanks, Sumit. So I do want to echo Sumit's comments, though, from a safety standpoint. Speaking from my own career, following San Bruno, I felt a very strong urge to move into a role where I could personally be close to how we manage the safety of our system. And I've dedicated the last eight years of my career to being in a position where I can help make our system safer. And so everything I talk about here today is something that I genuinely believe, and I work every day to improve the safety of our system. That's why I come to work every day. So I want to start just by talking a little bit about the philosophy of how we design and operate pipelines with the concept of layers of protection. So when we think about the process safety piece of the framework that Sumit mentioned, he didn't get to talk too much about it, but process safety is really a rigorous approach to putting layers of protection or engineered controls in place to prevent safety issues from happening. And so when we think about how we design, operate, and manage our pipelines, we start with layers of protection associated with design. That means things like, what's the steel that we put in the ground? What's the thickness of the pipeline that we put in the ground? What kind of coating do we include? It also includes things like, what are our easement rights? What are the right-of-way rights that we have for where we install our pipelines? Includes the routing of our pipelines, many other additional layers of protection that go into design. The second piece is how we operate and maintain a pipeline. So we have inspection criteria and maintenance activities that happen on a regular cadence. They're part of the federal and state regulations that we follow. And I'll get into more details about exactly what we perform on the pipelines here in Lafayette in just a moment. But we have those types of controls that are handled on a regular frequency. And we also have an integrity management program, which is an overarching pipeline safety program that tells us how often, well, it tells us how to manage the risks of the pipeline, and then how often we need to perform integrity assessments to ensure the pipeline is operating safely. And the last piece is our emergency response layers of protection. And so the first two stages of layers of protection are really intended for us to never have any sort of failure on our transmission pipeline. Last thing we ever want is there to be an unintentional release of gas from our pipeline system. But if there is one, then we also plan layers of protection to respond to that quickly. And that's where things like our manual and automated valves are intended for us to be able to shut in portions of our system if we do have an unintentional release of gas. And our Community Pipeline Safety Initiative is part of both the operations and maintenance portion, the design, it's actually all three types of layers of protection. It's part of our design in terms of our easements and right-of-way. It's part of how we operate and maintain our pipeline in terms of managing any encroachments over the pipeline. And it's also part of our emergency response if we do have to access the pipeline if there is an issue. So if we look specifically at the city of Lafayette, we have five pipelines that operate within the city. These pipelines serve customers not only in the Lafayette area, but around eleven thousand customers within Lafayette, but also in the surrounding La Miranda areas. And so, as we've mentioned before, you know, all of the folks in this area are our customers, but they're also part of our communities. And so making sure that we can safely and reliably serve everyone in this area is very important to us. We also serve St. Mary's College and schools and local businesses in the area. And I'll get into more details about the actual maintenance, but we have a high level of confidence in the safety and the operation of these pipelines. So again, for some context setting, and I won't dwell on this too much, but since the San Bruno incident, we have made significant investments in our transmission system as a whole. Sumit mentioned we have eighty thousand miles of pipeline we operate. Sixty-seven hundred miles of that is transmission pipeline in the neighborhood of ten miles of that operates in the city of Lafayette. But across our system, we've made very significant investments on the order of about $10 billion invested in our transmission system since 2011. And some of the major accomplishments here include complete validation of the maximum allowable operating pressure for all of our pipelines. We went out and collected over three million records associated with our pipelines, digitized them, and reestablished that we were operating our pipelines at a safe operating pressure for all 100% of those pipelines. And we also did a GPS survey to get much more accurate information about exactly where in the world our pipelines operate, which helps us to do a more accurate risk analysis and ensure that we're applying all of the right factors to a pipeline, knowing where it is in the world. And then, as you can see here, we've replaced a lot of pipeline, hydrostatically tested, and installed quite a few valves throughout our pipeline system. So if we get down to specifics for Lafayette, which is I know where we want to be. In terms of the operations and maintenance of the pipeline system, we perform multiple types of maintenance on our system on a regular cycle, which I mentioned before. So I'm going to walk through each one of these individually. The first one is our leak survey program. So this is where we either arially, so with a fixed-wing plane, or actually physically walk along the pipeline and use leak detection equipment to look for leaks on our transmission system. We perform that survey twice a year. And in recent history, we have not identified any leaks on any of the pipelines in the city of Lafayette. The second piece of maintenance activity that we perform is our corrosion protection. So one of the major risks to transmission pipelines is corrosion, either external corrosion, internal corrosion, or stress corrosion cracking, are the three varieties that we manage on our transmission system. And so we have a corrosion protection system, the combination of the coating on the pipeline with current on the pipeline that protects it from corrosion. And so we do maintenance on those facilities that provide that protection on an annual basis. And the most recent maintenance for all of the pipelines in the city of Lafayette shows no issues with those systems. And the last major maintenance activity that we perform is patrols. We patrol our pipelines at least quarterly. Most of them are patrolled monthly, and if they're in high-population areas, they're patrolled twice a month. And so the pipelines in Lafayette are patrolled on different frequencies, depending on whether they're in high-population areas or less-populated areas. And in the last patrols that were performed in August, we had no reported observations. So what we're looking for during those patrols is any sort of activity around the pipeline that could result in excavation damage or third-party damage to our pipelines, or any sort of building or encroachments that might be in the right-of-way of the pipeline that we'd like to avoid having there. As you can see, we've performed a significant number of patrols on these pipelines since January of last year. Twenty-nine is the minimum number that's there. And the pipeline where the trees are located that we've been discussing with the city of Lafayette is actually foot-patrolled and will continue to be foot-patrolled going forward. Another aspect of our maintenance and operations that I discussed briefly was our integrity assessments. We have a variety of different types of integrity assessments that are focused on different types of threats to the pipeline system. The top table is really focused on the corrosion threat to our pipelines. And we've assessed two of the pipelines in the Lafayette area in 2013 for external corrosion, with finding no issues associated with those pipelines. And the next planned assessment for those is in 2019, looking for internal corrosion on those pipelines. Another form of integrity assessment that we perform is what we call strength testing, which is a test where you fill a pipeline full of water and you raise it to a pressure well above the pressure that it operates at normally. And so it's really looking to establish a safety factor on the pressure that we operate our pipelines at. And we've conducted tests at different times on different pipelines in the city of Lafayette. We still have some portions of these pipelines that require a strength test. And that's being scheduled over the course of the next coming years to have the remaining pipelines tested. This map is a little hard to read on this slide, I apologize. So we do have several manual valves that are in the city of Lafayette area. We have one that's planned to be installed in the, we have one automated valve that's planned to be installed in the 2020 or 2021 timeframe. It's highlighted in yellow in the middle of the screen there. You can see that. My hand's shaking so bad you can't see it. And that is at the intersection of Olympic Oaks Drive and Olympic Boulevard is the location of that particular valve. And so the valves that are on our system, as I mentioned before, are really intended to be used only if we have an unintended release of gas, which we strive on the transmission system to never have. So our goal, from an integrity and asset management standpoint, is to ensure the safety of the pipelines so we never have to use our valves. They're maintained annually, we make sure that they are operable, but that is our goal, is to never have to use them. And we have some work that's planned upcoming in the city of Lafayette on our pipelines. The first one is related to an issue that's come up in the past, the shallow and exposed pipe that's in, that's been mentioned at Beechwood Drive between, well, you can read the location, along the Lafayette-Moraga Regional Trail. So our plans there are to remediate the exposed pipe this year, in 2018. There is some shallow pipe that's also in that vicinity that will be remediated in 2019. The second project here is related to the work that's been ongoing on St. Mary's Road. We had a pipeline replacement project that happened over the summer. The majority of that work is complete. We replaced about a mile of pipe on St. Mary's Road and got that tied in. There's a small portion, 150 feet, of work that needs to happen in 2019, so that's what's mentioned here, but the majority of the work has been completed. The next project is another vintage pipe replacement project that we have planned in the area on one of the pipelines here. And then the last project is a station rebuild that's actually taking place near Olympic Oaks and Olympic Boulevard. That's where the automated valve will be installed, and as well as the station being rebuilt in that area. So briefly, I wanted to mention a little bit about right-of-way best practices. And so for us to be able to safely maintain and operate our pipelines, it's important that we keep a clear right-of-way. This is one of the, these are examples of what's considered best practice in terms of a clear right-of-way above a pipeline, an easement between 10 and 25 feet in width that's completely clear. And this is associated with PIPA, which is an organization that is sponsored by FIMSA and is a cross-functional group of participation across different industries and different functions. It is best practice, and as we mentioned, according to SB 705, best practice is important for us to be able to implement to ensure we're meeting the intent of that requirement. for us to be able to implement, to ensure we're meeting the intent of that requirement in the state of California.
Ask a question about this. This was important. I did take a look at this. I was wondering, is best practice meant to be for new development, or is it for existing situations? Because I can't imagine that someone went through and cleared all the trees out that were already there
Right.
...to create this. This was developed with that in mind. That was my sense from best practices. Is that correct?
Well, absolutely. I think that the intent when a new pipeline is installed is that you establish a right-of-way, and then you maintain and defend it over time. This is a place where PG&E has fallen down over the years, is we didn't do a good job of maintaining and defending our right-of-ways for a very significant amount of time. So when we look at the things that are examples from our system, this is what our right-of-ways looked like, right? So in the picture on the left, we have vegetation completely obscuring where our pipeline is. So if you are someone who's going to plant a tree or run something in your backyard, and this is what our right-of-way looks like, you're going to have no idea there's a transmission pipeline there, and that creates in and of itself a safety issue. On the right-hand side, there's a structure sitting on top of our pipeline, right? So there's a shed in that back corner that has, you know, the potential to have some footings to it, where there might be something in contact with our pipeline, has the potential for us to not be able to access the pipeline if there's a leak or an issue with the pipeline underneath that structure. So we recognize that the examples here are an ideal situation that was designed this way and maintained this way over time, but this is what we're dealing with, and so we're trying to strike a balance between this and that ideal view, that best-practice view, right? And George will talk more about kind of what other operators are doing and what we're really trying to do with our system. And so I did want to just... Well, I know we're focused on more than just CPSI, or the Community Pipeline Safety Initiative. I did want to talk about what we're doing. So, related to that, those pictures from 2013, we're making sure that we're checking our pipeline, the areas above our pipeline, to see if we have any trees or structures that do pose a safety concern. We want to make sure we have immediate access if there is an issue. We want to work with our customers in the community. That's why we're here today, and that's very important to us, that we can give you comfort, that the safety of the system is the most important thing to us as well, and that we can work together to reach a common ground there. And we are, where we're removing trees, planting new trees at a safe distance from the pipeline, so that we're... We all love trees. It's not about the trees, us not thinking that they're important to you and to us as a community. So we are making sure that we are replacing the ones that we do have to remove. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to George.
Maybe if I can just... Thank you very much. If I can just make a brief comment. So we're at 5:00 to 5:00 right now, and a rough count of everybody in the room. I didn't do a good job at it, but there's a lot of you in the room. So I think, George, if I might, just respectfully ask that you take no more than 10 minutes, and then we can get into public comment, because I want to make sure that everybody in the room has an opportunity to comment. And then hopefully we'll have a little bit of time at the end to where you can respond to those comments, if that's okay?
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Please stop me if you feel like I'm going on too long. I don't have too many slides to go over, but as Christine mentioned, the CPSI or Community Pipeline Safety Initiative was born out of a recognition that we, as a company, should have been doing more. We make no bones about it that we should have been there. I've been doing this job in PG&E for 31 years, 23 as a pipeline engineer out in the field, evaluating pipelines, incidents, looking at defects, looking at anomalies, looking at corrosion defects. And in the last eight years, I wouldn't be sitting here today if I didn't feel like we're heading in the right direction. Just wanted to get that on the record. The San Bruno tragedy caused us to take a hard look at our system. First thing that we kicked off was a high-precision GPS survey. We called that the Pipeline Center Line Survey, where we actually walked all 6,000-plus miles of pipeline. We performed depth measurements. We looked for, as Christine talked about, sheds, obstructions over the pipeline. We generated projects to remove those as well. Anything that would pose a safety concern. To inform the next steps, we, as Christine mentioned also, we consulted with the DOT and the PIPA, Pipeline Informed Planning Alliance, regarding best practices. And you can clearly say, I won't read it for sake of time, but it basically supports that a clear right-of-way enables transmission pipelines to conduct inspections and testing and maintenance. In addition, in October 2010, it was FIMSA that issued a Building Safe Communities, Building Risk and its Application to Local Development Decisions, which includes, again, statements about keeping rights away free from obstructions and encroachments. And yes, I agree with you, Mr. Anderson, about the context about new developments moving forward, but I feel like it is looking back as well to ensure that we are applying best In addition to consulting with PIPA, if you can go to the next slide, Christine, we did perform benchmarking surveys with AGA, American Gas Association, and we took a look at and asked other companies, "What are you doing?" And you can see from this list that it varies, but in most cases, they do limit trees and vegetation inside their right-of-way. Some go right-of-way, edge-of-right-of-way to edge-of-right-of-way. Some take a more moderate approach and adjust that based on the pipeline and the buffer zone. Just to say that this isn't something that we just created or concocted, this is universal through other utilities as well. We also found that many other operators are doing actually a much better job than we were doing. So that was a recognition that we had. The next slide. PG&E also commissioned its own studies to look at the potential for tree roots to interact with pipes. We did identify 53 sites that we wanted to evaluate. We did discover that 75% of those sites experienced coating damage. 90% of those sites were within five feet of the pipeline that we noticed. Of the 40 sites, 15 of them where the coating was damaged also had evidence of external corrosion. It is a fact, coating is the primary defense for steel pipelines. We do have cathodic protection, as Christine talked about, which helps to reverse the natural reaction, the chemical reaction of corrosion, but coating is the primary barrier for that. When the external coating is damaged, it can lead, not always. I think there was a statement in some of the questions that tree roots cause corrosion. That is not the case, and we don't support that, but it can lead. When you have bare steel, it can lead to corrosion. So I just wanted to make that clear. And if you do have corrosion, you could have leaks. Studies that we did also found that tree roots can wrap around a pipe. We'll show some pictures of that and cause stress to it, especially during windstorms, and could uproot the trees if those fall down. And while PG&E hasn't experienced it, there are other operators' pipelines that have been struck by lightning also when trees and roots were in close proximity to each other, excuse me, roots and pipelines in close proximity. In terms of next steps, the studies did recommend that additional info be gathered regarding specific attributes, so like species of the trees, depth of cover over the pipeline, the actual coating type, there's various types, and the surrounding conditions to help inform our risk ratings, and then the potential for tree and pipe-root interaction. And this factors into how we developed our Tree-by-Tree Review Criteria and Process, which I'll review in more detail. Let's walk through a few images, though, as a result of these digs. This is a dig in San Leandro of our Pipeline Line 153. The yellow dashed line indicates the pipeline, the tree, root ball sitting on top of it. Next slide. This slide actually depicts, once we were able to remove the root ball, the damage that we saw to the pipe with the roots interacting with the coating and causing metal loss. You can see on the left the trees and the roots, and then the metal loss on the right.
Was it leaking?
Pardon me?
Was it leaking?
No, it was not. In Chico, next slide, we also had a similar situation with a root ball on the pipe. You can see it's a quite large tree with roots interacting to the pipe. If you look at the next slide, you again have those roots interacting, wrapped around, and I would say that had this tree gone down and taken the root ball with it, it would have had a consequence to the pipeline, or at least induce some bending strain. The next slide is one that we recently found in Palo Alto. This is on our Line 132. This was a Chinese elm tree, I believe, that also had roots interacting with the pipeline. You can see the corrosion that was beginning, and that corrosion pit on the right, it goes into the... That's the wall of the pipe that you're looking at. And that corrosion pit is 92% of the depth of the pipeline, so you had about another 8% of the wall thickness of the pipeline before it would have leaked. The next picture that you're looking at is one in Fall River Mills, where we did have a big tree go down over a pipeline. On the left picture there, you can see that orange pipes that are vertically. That's sitting right on top of the pipeline, and some yellow flags in the background, that's the alignment of the pipe going into the picture in that pipe, and root ball was sitting over the top. Did not induce any strain. The damage to the roots had on the coating, though, was on the right.
Could I have a little question here? That tree is a big tree, the one on the left.
Yes.
I would think that tree was there before the pipeline was put in, right?
I don't...
I'm not trying to go for... But I don't understand. I think maybe there's been something that's changed in terms of understanding, but many of these pipelines have been installed over the past, very close to trees. And the trees have gotten to be quite large, and now they're becoming an issue for the tree as well as the pipe, because that tree didn't get that big overnight. And so I think we have a similar situation here. We have pipelines in proximity to trees installed purposefully in that location, and kind of ignoring the fact the tree was going to get bigger. So what has happened? Is there a change now in understanding, or is there a practice change? What's the difference now?
Well, I can say... What I can say is, and I don't know the year of the pipeline was installed, but I can definitely follow up. What I can say is that we would not have installed that pipeline underneath the tree. What I can say, though, that that tree was probably adjacent to the pipeline, if it was installed after the tree was there. And I think we said it, that we did not look forward enough to realize that that tree was going to grow, and during the time of installation...
Okay.
We have pipelines that were installed back in the 20s, and we're subject to what our ancestors have done, and we're trying to make right.
Yeah, and we've got some really old trees. Some of those oak trees go back 200, 300 years, so...
I agree.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Let's see. So next slide. So I'll try and hurry. I know my 10 minutes are probably close. Based on industry...
George, you got about five minutes.
Okay.
And I'm slowing him down, so...
I added a couple...
Give him a credit.
I did.
Thank you. Take a sip, then. So based on some of that industry best practice and third-party guidance, we did develop a utility standard. This is one of the results of that standard. And basically what you're seeing here is, we, instead of saying entire right-of-way, edge-to-edge, we actually divided up the right-of-way into what we call a pipe safety zone, which is five feet on the other side of the pipeline, the border zone, which is the five to 10 feet on the other side, and then the outer zone. In the 53-site study that we did, we found that 90% of the damage was in that pipe safety zone, within five feet of the other side of the pipeline. So we tend to focus our attention there. It leads us to believe that those are the most serious ones, and... Let's see. The trees that we decide to leave that are outside that pipe zone, they don't just go away. We continue to monitor those. So those are left there with purpose, that we'll continue to monitor them, look for any hazards that they may create, and hopefully we'll be taking care of those. The plan is to take care of those and address those if and when they become a hazard to the pipeline. So that's the basis of our decision to basically go less conservative as we go out. I'm sorry. Next slide. So the Tree-by-Tree Review is something that we... Tree-by-Tree Review is something that we did on every tree within 14 feet of the pipeline. And I know there's been a lot of talk about the numbers, but in 2015 in Lafayette, we reviewed more than 1,000 trees. And we really looked from right-of-way to right-of-way for the most part. And then by applying the Tree-by-Tree model and carefully reviewing each and every tree, we're actually able to significantly reduce that to 270 trees that need to be removed for safety reasons. At the cities and communities' request, we did, in the summer of 2015, we committed to doing additional work and looking at other factors and getting site-specific information, which the next slide will describe what those are, but we were actually able to reduce that number of, that 272, down to 207 trees. That's where our count is currently today.
If I may, the first report we got was 1,200 trees had to be removed. That was the presentation by PG&E representatives in this room. Now, I don't know where they came up with that number. Maybe that was the 1,000, or maybe it was the 1,000 plus 200 more they wanted to add just in case. The problem I have is credibility. When you walk into a community organization and you say, "We're taking out 1,200 trees, it's what we're going to have to do," and then you come back a year later and you say, "Well, no, it's really going to be 272. Aren't you happy?" It's like, no. What happened? And not only what happened, who are you? Why would you come to us without doing this information work in the second stage first? Have it down to a bare minimum. So that's important note for you for the future.
Understood.
And it really hurt us here. Hurt us, the council, too. Because when people heard that and they said, "You're going to agree to that?" It was like, well, what can we do? This is PG&E. They know what they're doing. They're the pros. They're the ones who have to do this. And then the rugs cut out from underneath. That's when you come back and say, "Oh, no, 800 of those are going to have to go out." So thank you for listening to me. Thank you. Appreciate that.
The next slide is actually the factors here that we looked at. So there's 12 of them, and really divided up into tree, pipeline, and this actual site conditions. And it's all these factors together and the way they interact with each other that really drives Tree-by-Tree Study and the decisions that we make and how we arrived at the 207 trees. I can't say this was an evolution. It is unfortunate that we came with 1,000 trees. Didn't have this done beforehand. Could thank the community and the pushback that we got to make us go and take a harder look at what we can do. And all we can do right now is move forward. These were the factors that we actually ended up using and are sitting in our standard today.
Okay. Is that the end of your presentation? Okay. All right. Yes.
I was just going to say we had additional slides, but I think this is the right place for us to leave off.
Okay. All right. Mr. Seng, do you have a final comment?
Yeah, just real quick, the only comment I was going to make, and maybe we can share the next slide, Christine, and then open it up for public comments, is that there's a lot of questions regarding the environmental impact as well, so I just wanted to take 30 seconds and touch on that as well. So each of the respective projects that we've identified for tree removal, we've done a site-by-site environmental assessment. We have one of our environmental experts actually with us in the meeting here today. And we look at the culture and environmental specific items to identify any critical habitats, endangered species, to ensure that we're taking care and mindful of that as we do the work, because it's very important for us not to also ensure the safety of the pipeline itself, but also be good environmental stewards. That's a key dimension and a key fabric of how we execute work. So that's the only comment.
Okay.
And with that, we'll turn it back to you, Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. So it's time for a public comment now. Mr. Wolf is bringing me the yellow slips. If you haven't filled one out and you'd like to speak, please do so, and... Thank you. And turn it in to Mr. Wolf. Again, three minutes, if you can state your name and your address. We're going to keep it right to three minutes. I think we do have a timer. Do we have a timer that's going to go up? Okay, great. All right. Okay, so our first speaker is James Gray, and then Russ McCandless is right after. So if we can have folks ready to go, that would be great. So, Mr. Gray.
The mic is not on there. You might want to hit the button there.
Looks like it's on now. Okay. My name's James Gray. I live at 653 Jenny Court. Been a 31-year resident of Lafayette. I have a copy of a letter here that was sent to the Lafayette City Council dated September 7th of this year from the Pipeline Safety Trust. The Pipeline Safety Trust was established following a gas pipeline accident in Bellingham, Washington in 1999, with the mission to work with parties across the nation to improve pipeline safety. They examined PG&E's record of pipeline incidents, as reported by PG&E, to the federal regulator responsible, the Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration. Quoting from that letter, "When we looked at the performance of both gas transmission and gas distribution pipeline operators of a similar size, we were surprised..." and gas distribution pipeline operators of a similar size, we were surprised to learn that PG&E has the highest failure rate in both categories. What is even more concerning is when you compare the ten-year averages to the five-year averages, it appears the failure rates are increasing rather than getting safer. The Pipeline Safety Trust analysis to ask PG&E and the PUC if either has a good answer as to why PG&E has the highest rates of pipeline failures and why those rates are increasing after the San Bruno incident. I'd like to point out that none of the incidents resulted in PG&E's surprisingly bad track record were reported by PG&E as being caused by tree root damage. In fact, across the entire country, there have not been any gas line, pipeline incidents reported to the PHMSA that were caused by tree root damage in more than twenty years. PG&E could have cut down every tree along every mile of gas transmission lines and would not have improved their failure rate record. PG&E has shown us tree root damage coating to the pipe coating which exposes the underlying steel to corrosion. But the pie chart graph in the letter from the Pipeline Safety Trust shows corrosion as the least common cause of failure reported by PG&E that leads to significant pipeline incidents. For some reason, we are contemplating removing hundreds of heritage trees to address the smallest wedge in the failure analysis pie chart. If we are seriously concerned about pipeline safety, I think we should commit our resources to doing something about the big wedges in the pie chart. The weld failures, excavation damage, incorrect operation, and natural force damage which are the significant causes of pipeline incidents. Trees and their roots aren't even a blip on the national scale of gas pipeline safety. Their theoretical threat to pipelines does not warrant cutting our precious trees." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. So if you can, if, if we can hold the applause, that would be great, in the interest of time, I'd appreciate it, thank you. So Mr. McCandless and then we have Dennis Cuzak. And just a reminder for PG&E, you'll have an opportunity at the very end to respond to some of the questions, so please listen closely, I appreciate it. Okay, Mr. McCandless?
Good afternoon, my name is Russ McCandless, I'm a resident of Lafayette, thirty-five years. I live at Olympic Oaks, which is the development, which has a gas transmission line adj, adjacent to it, which connects to the Maraga Bike Trail. Eight years ago today, at four-thirty morning, I arrived in San Bruno. And the reason I was there is after a thirty-eight year with a major U.S. corporation, I joined the American Red Cross and I ran disaster response for Costa-Costa County until I retired two years ago. When I arrived at four-thirty in the morning, my assignment was to go into the shelter with those people that had suffered the loss at six PM the evening before, to feed them, comfort them, assist them, and make sure they got, get spoken to the right person. I spoke one-on-one with individuals who lost, lost family members, I spoke with individuals who lost their entire home, and I interviewed people that said they were running out the back door as the front door of their house was on fire. So I'm very well attuned to the unfortunate incidents of San Bruno and God forbid we wouldn't that ever happen again. But my concern is with the focus that PG&E has put on the, the trees, I don't believe there's enough emphasis or enough, excuse me, enough evidence to show that the trees would cause a type of explosion or a major leak or a combustion as we experienced in San Bruno. And I just, I just don't believe from my understanding and what I've read, this is the, this is a real issue, these streets. You've also said in your documentation that it's an issue of safety for first responders and a reason why the trees should be removed. But in my experience in running disaster assessment, no fire department would ever go to a on-fire pipeline unless the pipeline was shut off first by PG&E in this case. So I don't see an exposure to the first responders because they're trained not to go until the pipeline is actually shut off. Lastly, in your documentation and on previous slide this evening, you refer to putting a valve at Olympic Oaks where I live and Olympic Boulevard. I'm assuming you're referring to the vault pumping station that's on the corner of Release Station and Olympic Boulevard? Because all your documentation is showing or stating you're going to put it on our private property and there's no PG&E facility there today that would allow for a valve unless you have something planned, I'm not aware of. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. We have Dennis Cuzak and then Elise Pellegrini.
Yeah, good afternoon, my name is Dennis Cuzak. I live at thirty-three fifty-five Mildred Lane in Lafayette, pretty close to that South Lucille, Maraga, St. Mary's Road intersection. I've lived there forty years. I was shocked when the, the city had signed an agreement to begin to cut the trees. I never related trees to gas risks as opposed to trees to electrical line risk, transmission line risk. However, the last twenty years of my employment, I worked for a catastrophic risk assessment company and performed probabilistic risk analysis out of a variety of businesses, including offshore Gulf, offshore platforms in the Gulf of Mexico, electrical transmission distribution systems, nuclear power plants, thermal power plants, hydro plants, worked for insurance and reinsurance companies. I'm not claiming to be an expert on pipelines per se, but I am claiming to have knowledge of the probabilistic risk techniques in practice today in industry. So my, my concern is that I'm trying to relate the tree risk as PG&E claims to justify cutting that down. And what I'd like to know simply is, what's the total estimated probability of loss along the lines in Lafayette? I want to know that answer. I haven't been able to get an answer. Secondly, I'd like to know the percent contribution to that loss on an annual basis from the trees. I want to know how big or small the trees are as a player in this. Part two would be, once we know that probability of loss, what mitigation techniques are available to reduce that risk? And I'm an advocate of automatic shut-off valves, as I think they have the ability to take care of human error provided they're maintained well. The bottom line, I guess, is PG&E has stated trees are a problem. At the same time, they've said, "Don't worry, trust us, the pipeline is safe." Got some mixed messages here. I, I don't, you know, it's a trust issue again, right? I was pleased to hear what was said today about roots. I, I haven't seen that before and I compliment PG&E on that. Lastly, I think the way forward is to say, "Look, doing some kind of a probabilistic quantitative risk assessment to answer those questions is the way to go." I looked at some of the PG&E literature, they have an enterprise risk management system in place, which in fact, if you use those techniques, that will help you get there. And there's some data already embedded in it, ERM. Some of those weightings that they have are not relevant to Lafayette, but I think I'd like to see the study limited to only Lafayette. It would be tailored to the age of the pipelines, it would be tailored to the trees at risk. So we would really know what the risk is. Homeowners, citizens here deserve to know that. Let's be transparent as possible. I don't believe in the idea that you're the experts, you tell us what to do, and we'll follow blindly over the cliff. Uh-uh. I think the community here is pretty interested in this problem and I think they want some real hard answers. So I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cuzak. Elise Pellegrini, followed by Kim Overvall. Actually, Allison Hill will go next, I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Elise Pellegrini and I live at thirty-two thirty-three Sweet Drive here in Lafayette. I've been a resident of Lafayette for sixteen years. I'm speaking today on behalf of my husband, Damon Pellegrini, who couldn't be here because he's at work. He's a captain at San Ramon Valley Fire Protection District and I'm speaking on behalf of him, not on behalf of his fire department. My name is Damon Pellegrini, I live at thirty-two thirty-three Sweet Drive. I am a fire captain with San Ramon Valley Fire Participation District. I am not representing the fire district, I am representing myself as a resident. I responded to many natural gas leaks in my twenty-two-year career in the fire service. From small three-quarter inch home distribution lines to larger commercial lines, my concern is PG&E is wanting to cut down our oldest residents to provide first responders emergency access to the leak or fire on or near the natural gas line. As a fire captain responsible for a fire engine and my crew, we do not go to the exact location of the breach of the pipe. I will describe my response to these calls based on policies and procedures of my fire district. PG&E's recommendation and federal guidelines. Number one, responding to a breach of a residential home three-quarter inch natural gas line per operations, policy, and procedures, emergency procedures for natural gases incidents. First, evacuate the residents affected, evacuate the home to the left and right of the leak and on some occasions, the home in the rear. I have my engineer face the engine out and upwind a hundred and fifty feet. Next, isolate the area using yellow tape and deny entry of the public and vehicles. We do not stop the gas leak, we wait for PG&E to shut the gas off or fix the pipe. Number two, responding to a commercial natural gas line. Per the federal government's Emergency Response Guide, Reference Guide one-one-five, Gas Flammable, procedure evacuate the area, evacuate a hu, eight hundred meters or a half mile, do not extinguish fire, isolate the area with yellow caution tape and deny entry to the scene. PG&E is responsible for shutting down the line. In conclusion, PG&E's argument of removing these beautiful trees to allow access to first responder has no merit. My job as a first responder is to evacuate, isolate, and deny entry of the public, or excuse me, of the public to the incident. It is my opinion PG&E at a minimum needs to automatic, needs automatic shut-off valves and if PG&E and the city council actually wanted to keep Lafayette residents safe, they would put a new natural gas line down the middle of the bike trail made of modern pipe material that moves with the earth and not the old steel pipe we are waiting to fail. Respectfully, Damon Pellegrini.
Thank you. Allison Hill, who has six minutes, been seated three minutes by, by Kim, is Kim here? Great, okay, thank you. So Allison, you've got six minutes, followed by Michael Dawson is next, after Allison. Thank you.
Allison Hill, nine-three-two Hawthorne Drive. I have lived in Lafayette forty-nine years and live within a few hundred feet above the Lafayette-Maraga Trail and the PG&E gas pipeline. I regularly walk on the trail and enjoy the shade provided by the many trees which have grown taller over these forty-nine years. I'm concerned about their removal, as in this time of climate change, trees provide an important balance. I'm also concerned about the safety of the gas pipeline and its proximity to my neighborhood, but have not yet read anything that convinces me that the trees pose a danger to the pipeline. The age of the pipeline, pipeline location mapping, location of shut-off valves, and the testing of the pipeline do concern me. I also live about two blocks from the exposed pipeline near Beechwood Drive. My recollection is that it's been exposed for the entire time I have lived in Lafayette and has only recently been noticed. Since the San Bruno pipeline disaster and with increasing news of terrorism and caution, I have become increasingly concerned about this exposed pipeline, which it's very clearly marked, but that is kind of the good news and the bad news. In the document I got at the PG&E open house, it was stated that that would be taken care of in twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen. I learned today that it's now twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen. I did attend the PG&E open house on May ninth, hoping to get an answer to some of my questions about pipeline safety and pipeline testing. I was not able to get an answer from the many PG&E representatives present. I would, one would refer me to another, refer me to another. Finally, Councilmember Anderson saw me getting upset and he tried to help me find someone to answer my question. And finally, I was directed to write my questions down and I would get a response later. One question I asked was, "Could we get a map of which trees were in question?" And I was told that the city wouldn't allow that. I was later told by Councilmember Anderson that that was not the case. I received an acknowledgement for my question two days later on May eleventh, but no answers. When I had not received a response by May twenty-fifth, I wrote again and also added a question about location of shut-off valves in the area. On May twenty-ninth, I received a response to my question about shut-off valves and a statement that I would soon receive information about pipeline testing and maintenance. I have not yet received that information and can only assume that there's been no testing, that PG&E doesn't want to release that information, or the records are not These safety concerns remind me of an event several years ago. I was returning from a bike ride one morning and walking my bike up Ridge Road when I began to smell gas. When I rounded the corner near my home, there were East Bay mud and PG&E trucks and workers busy. Because of the gas and the air, I didn't ask anything, I just got inside as fast as I could. But as the day progressed and I had no gas, but I couldn't smell it anymore, I, I went out to try and find out what was happening. And it appeared that, and according to PG&E, I think according to both parties, East Bay mud had cut through the PG&E gas line to my house. But East Bay mud also added that it wasn't where it should be on the map, that it was supposed to be below their water line, but it was actually above their water line. So the whole neighborhood was blocked for the day. I would urge our city council, city staff, and PG&E to set aside the current tree removal plan and to concentrate on real safety issues and answering our specific questions about them, such things as pipeline maintenance and testing and the installation of automated shut-off valves within the city. I understand from the letter I received from PG&E that there are currently no automated shut-off valves within the city and only five or six manual shut-off valves in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Michael Dawson, who has been seated three minutes by John Kiefer, is John Kiefer here? Okay, thank you. And after Mr. Dawson, Gina Dawson is next. Mr. Dawson?
Mr. Dawson, here we discuss having the ability to show these slides.
Sure, do we have? Ready?
Good afternoon, city council, thank you Vice Mayor Burks. We appreciate this opportunity to get together. I do want to say thank you to PG&E for your time today. We do appreciate the service you provide and what you do is very important. We come here really with a renewed sense of wanting to cooperate with you, so we hope to achieve that today. And thank you to all the residents who are here as well. For the record, this three-minute comment period is inefficient time to adequately respond to P&amp;G's answers, nor is it the right format. Some of the PG&E answers were helpful that we received in response to a hundred and fifty questions, but many were cut and paste from pre-canned answers and they read sort of like brochures. For this reason and for the fact that we have only ten days to review seventeen-hundred pages total, we ask for future discussions on this topic. To that end, we also formally ask PG&E to voluntarily release the city from this tree-cutting agreement and to start a citizen advisory committee in Lafayette to work with citizens, city, and utilities together, the three-legged stool that was mentioned earlier. Since we don't have much time, I'll cut to the chase. Lafayette residents unfortunately have lost trust in PG&E. This utility has pursued a five-hundred-million-dollar project across the state that preys on each city's assumption that what PG&E says must be true. Even the city of Lafayette was led to falsely believe this agreement was necessary to protect the safety of its residents. This is shameful behavior by PG&E. But it's also predictable behavior from a utility that was found culpable for the North Bay fires just recently and then spent millions of dollars on ads blaming climate change. Deflection is apparently hard-baked into their business model. This half-billion- This half-billion-dollar Community Pipeline Safety Initiative is an unregulated and unnecessary program. It is not required by law. Six years after its rollout, PG&E has not improved their pipeline safety record a bit. But of course, trees aren't causing accidents on transmission pipelines because PG&E has confirmed there's never been an accident by a tree. That was question 2.7. The many root studies that PG&E commissioned to show that roots cause corrosion are all uniformly inconclusive. Time and time again, they couldn't make the connection. Damage on pipeline coatings like we saw just a minute ago, PG&E doesn't mention that all coatings on pipelines disbond and fail, not just where there are roots. The photographs of roots that are coating around the pipeline are emotional scare tactics. They don't show the untouched interiors of the pipeline where it's important. It's possible that roots may even be like hands securing the pipe into the soil and shielding from other sources of damage like rocks and diggings. We've made this point before. But let's discuss PG&E's main rationale, which is needing immediate access to the pipeline. Do we have the next slide? First responders in Lafayette clearly state, and we just heard a moment ago, that trees are not a hazard or a hindrance. PG&E must believe that too, otherwise they wouldn't allow this large permanent trellis that lines Plaza Park. It lies directly on top of the pipeline. The pipeline runs right through the middle of that picture. They say that these ornamental trees in the behind the trellis, their smaller ornamental trees must go because they need immediate access to the pipeline, but not the trellis. They can work around it. In question 59, answers describing the careful analysis for this decision were given, but then erroneously they say that there's grass on either side, which is not true. This logic and confusion about the site makes us lose trust in PG&E. When we question PG&E about rationale, about a tree program that's not required by law or regulation, PG&E says, don't worry, it's doing everything it should. It's going above and beyond. In 12 of their responses, they use the term leveraging industry's best practices. If this were the case, PG&E should have the best-in-class safety record, don't you think? We'd appreciate PG&E's response to the following. Next slide. Unfortunately, PG&E has the dubious honor of having the very worst accident record in the United States. It's a little bit of an I chart, but the very top is PG&E. This data is from the PHMSA Safety Administration and is confirmed by the Pipeline Safety Trust. Whether we look at 10-year averages or five-year averages, PG&E has more significant incidents per mile on their gas transmission line than any other large provider. PG&E claims they want to be the safest pipeline in the country, but almost exactly eight years after San Bruno and a solid six years since the start of the CPSI program, this report card gives them a solid F. And it's not California population density that's causing the problem with these incidents. Southern California gas has less than half the incident rate as PG&E. That's the yellow line in the middle of the chart. So something else must be going on. And by the way, a similar story holds. This is transmission line. The same thing holds for distribution lines, but there are just even larger numbers of accidents. So what are the causes of the accidents? Next slide. Take a look at the pie chart on the right. This shows PG&E's incidents over the past five years. That blue slice that's impossible to read is 40% of the accidents, and that is due to excavation or diggings, people digging into the line. Other US transmission pipeline operators, that's the chart on the left, don't have that same kind of problem. In Lafayette, we're seeing it ourselves. We had 27 such accidents in the last two years alone. PG&E often talks, they didn't do it tonight, but they've done it in the past, talk about their pride in having a rate of incidents per 811 tickets. And if you believe what they're saying there, it seems like the record's improving, but it's not. And nothing could be further from the truth. I just want to give an aside. I had an incident last month where I was walking down the trail and a guy was jackhammering the side of the embankment where I knew the pipeline was. And I asked him, I said, what are you doing? And he goes, I'm looking for the pipeline. And he was running a line to the house behind him. And then as I was walking away, because I didn't want to stand around while he's jackhammering near the pipeline, he turns to the friend next to him and he says, is the pipeline 12 feet or 22 feet from the marker?
Mr. Dawson, we need you to wrap up.
I'm at six minutes?
You're at six minutes.
Okay. Next slide. So this is just the trend line of how things are getting worse. Excavations in San Bruno are extremely high and getting higher. Equipment failure and also incorrect operation are also getting higher. So we focus in on trees. I think that's the wrong place to look. I think we need to talk about what's happening in our community, and the only way to do that is to stop this tree-cutting agreement and to start working together, utilities, citizens, and city, and to find ways to work together.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dawson. Okay, if you can hold your applause, please. We've got Gina Dawson for six minutes. Mr. Cass has seated three of his. Is Mr. Cass here? Great, thank you. So Gina Dawson and then Mary Fuchs, please. Oh, no. Claire Seebury is after Ms. Dawson. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Gina Dawson. I live in Lafayette. And because there's only a few minutes of time, and I have always prepared remarks, I doubt I'll be able to make it, I want to cut to the chase. When PG&E came to Lafayette with the Community Pipeline Safety Initiative, you would think it would be about our community and you would think it would be about pipeline safety. But after a year and a half, we waited for answers because the city knows. We were asking, why are they doing this? Why is PG&E doing this? A year and a half later, we finally get some answers to those questions and we got, what, 1,000 pages and we went through, extrapolated what we could. And what's just jumped out right away is 60% of Lafayette pipeline has not been tested by any means. We have 11 miles of PG&E-operated gas transmission pipelines. More than half of it has not been tested by either hydrostatic pressure testing, by direct access testing, or by inline inspection. These pipelines have been installed since 1940, as they're 70-years-old pipelines that have not been tested. So to tell us that this Community Pipeline Safety Program is about safety when you have not tested our pipelines is unacceptable. It's neglectful. It's disrespectful to our community. The other thing I just want to highlight, there's a lot of things written down here and I'm no expert, but common sense talks to me about this. Diggings. Diggings is a problem in our community. It's PG&E's number one problem. These are most likely on distribution lines, but we don't know because it hasn't been clarified by PG&E to us. But for the past two years, there's been 27 diggings. That's one a month. What's worse about this is more than half of these, at least 50% of these diggings had a valid USA ticket, which means people can, they call the 811 number to get verified that, yeah, it's safe to dig there. That's kind of a huge problem because in Carmel, quite a few years ago, there was also a dig-in in a neighborhood and it was a PG&E dig-in on a valid 811 ticket. A house exploded. And the cause of that was PG&E did not have the correct records. And that's kind of scary for us. Did we dodge a bullet every time? Once a month, we dodge a bullet when someone does a dig-in? That's a little bit scary. That's a lot scary. We'd like to know what PG&E is doing about that. Other concerns is lack of historic records and specifications. Those are all very important in terms of, I would think, how you calculate the way you're going to maintain the pipeline and the operation of the pipeline, what kind of pressure, et cetera. Once again, no expert, but that seems to be information that needs to be clarified. There's multiple exposed pipelines, not just the one that you are addressing because we pointed it out. We'd like to know, where are those? What are you doing about them? I think the other thing to talk about, Allison referred to it, Mrs. Hill, that, well, you plan to get around to these things and then the plans change. And if you see way down in the red, some of the reasons are, well, you know, there's maybe new technology coming out, which is great. We can appreciate that. Maybe there's new ways to inspect the pipeline so that we don't have to even worry about any corrosion or dents or dings or whatever, what have you. Great. But that's not here. You don't plan on testing that for quite a few years. And the very end of all this, you say, well, also this depends on the ratepayers, the gas storage and transmission ratepayers case. What does that have to do with addressing safety problems in Lafayette? Safety is safety. If there are things to be addressed, doesn't matter who's paid for it, shareholders, which the CPSI is being paid for, or PG&E. You're a billion-dollar company. You're very profitable. I know you have lots of liability and are facing different things and for the same reasons that what we're talking about here, possible neglect of basic integrity management. So I think that's the very first thing and most important thing I want to talk about. So talking about trees, seems very secondary, tertiary, I don't even know. It shouldn't even be on the table. I have a whole paper also on integrity issues of the Community Pipeline Safety Initiative. I'll pass this on to you. It's an inconsistent program. Residents and cities are being treated differently. Trees seem to be held to different standards. We were in a meeting in Danville with a few of you folks, actually, and some of those residents fighting this agreement got a pass, said, hey, we getting access to your backyard? We're good. And then another person fell out, in fact, the person whose tree was the picture you showed. I met that woman. I was in her backyard. I saw that hole. She gave me pictures. And the pipeline, the trees, the roots were two feet above the pipeline. And from what she told me, what she knew, she couldn't tell what PG&E found. They wouldn't tell her. She specifically said, PG&E treated me like a bystander. She had to be moved out of her home and she doesn't even know when she's going to be able to go back, what PG&E is doing, are they moving the pipeline, et cetera. I do have solutions. We do want to work together. We do ask for the advisory panel. And we also want to present the Community Integrity Management Program, a Lafayette community-specific look at integrity management in our town, specifically to our pipelines. What are the risks? Identify them, evaluate them, rank them, figure out how we're going to address them, inform our community. Let us be a part of that. So I want to just end with, I respectfully ask, one of the first ways to get back to rebuilding trust for PG&E is for you to release the city of Lafayette from this agreement because our city council was not informed, our community was not informed, and if they were, they would not probably have signed this agreement. We know that pipeline, community safety, pipeline safety, whatever kind of safety it is, is first and foremost. So thank you, and thank you all for being here. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dawson. Claire Seebury, who has been seated three minutes by Mary Fuchs. Is Mary here? Great. So three minutes for Claire and then next up, Deborah Callister.
Six minutes.
Six minutes, I'm sorry. Six minutes.
No worries.
Thank you.
Okay. Hi, everybody. My name is Claire Seebury. I'm at 3189 Somerset Drive. I'm a student at Campbell Lando High School and I've lived in Lafayette my whole life. Ever since I was young, I've been very interested in the world around me and my life was guided by an infinitely large set of invisible rules and I wanted to know who dictated these and why. So after learning about our government and how it functions in third grade, I wrote a letter to President Obama with ideas about how we should simply, quote, "melt all the snow on the East Coast and send it to California to fix the drought." When I received a letter back weeks later, I was overjoyed. I viewed those rules that had seemed so arbitrary with a striking new perspective. People had made those rules and people could alter them too. I've continued to participate in political activism since that first letter to the White House. I've taken leadership positions in my academic and surrounding community and I'm unafraid to speak my mind and take charge when, excuse me, problems arise. I'm pre-registered to vote because I want my voice to be heard as soon as possible. I've actually spoken here once before when this whole issue with our local trees first arose, and unfortunately, I have to be here and speak yet again. I shouldn't have to come here on a school night with homework, college applications, club meetings, and three tests to study for. I shouldn't have to hand out letters from experts who really should be here right now, but they weren't allowed to be in this meeting and speak. I shouldn't have to look up what an easement is, decipher the legal language on my own home's title insurance papers, and then wonder why the city entered into an agreement with a company allowing them into homes that they might not have the right to. I shouldn't have to stand here and explain why facts matter, why research matters, why statistics matter. The environment matters and we must continue to advocate for its protection to combat hundreds of years of human negligence. This starts at the hands of ordinary people and extraordinary corporations and in places like Lafayette and beyond. We are here, whether we should be or not, because we recognize the power of holding elected officials and corporations accountable. We are here asking once again that politicians elected by us and for us have our best interests and the environment at heart. Our local politicians in our district and throughout California have been doing a great job. Representative Marc DeSagne and Assemblywoman Catherine Baker in particular have been working to pass legislation to help our environment and preserve it for future generations. Governor Brown just signed a law blocking a vast amount of offshore drilling. So we're asking that you stand in solidarity with your fellow Californian politicians on both sides of the aisle. Your jobs, what you all ran for and were elected for, they're in agreement, an agreement between you and us, your constituents, that you will make the difficult decisions to the best of your ability. You're supposed to have your constituents' best interests at heart. And PG&E's remarks throughout this meeting show they claim to feel the same, what with all the anecdotes and the family statements. The least you can do is work with your constituents or your family to develop a safe, fact-based plan for this pipeline, these heritage oaks, and this town. John Muir once said, "God has cared for these trees, saved them from drought, disease, avalanches, and a thousand tempests and floods, but he cannot save them from fools. We cannot act the fool." Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Deborah Callister, followed by Kent Fitlet, I believe. Ms. Callister.
Good afternoon. My name is Deborah Cox-Callister and I reside on Hawthorne Drive. I have witnessed the development of Lafayette trees along Lafayette Trails for over 40 years. Many of the trees, as Councilmember Anderson noted, precede or predate the gas pipeline. I have a background in biology, native plants, collaborative learning, third-party conflict resolution, and contemporary rhetorical theory and criticism. My goal is to convince you there's a better way to deal with this controversy. We all do have common goals. We want to live and prosper in safe communities. PG&E is suffering from a credibility problem. Most of us here do not buy this tree-cutting program masquerading as public safety. We are not interested in a program that features our trees as scapegoats to purify or assuage our guilt associated with the horrific loss of life in San Bruno, for example. The city of Lafayette's credibility is also at stake. Excluding public input by accepting PG&E's half-million-dollar hush money to kill protected city trees as sacrificial lambs is nothing short of gross negligence. To be fair, though, PG&E has misrepresented the safety risk of trees and pipelines. We residents aren't interested in symbolic acts to make us feel safe. Rather, we want to expect, and we do expect, sound safety policy effectively implemented to ensure the integrity of PG&E pipelines throughout our community. If PG&E and the city of Lafayette mutually agreed to nullify the tree-cutting agreement, these credibility issues could be mitigated. Stakeholders could collectively hire a reputable third-party facilitator to collaboratively design a Community Pipeline Integrity Management Initiative, as mentioned by Ms. Dawson. A conflict resolution expert and mentor of mine once stated, "The quality of the outcome is directly related to the quality of the process." I'm grateful and privileged to be able to voice my opinion. The quality of this process is, three minutes next, format is archaic and woefully inadequate for engaging the land community. In 2013, I published an article entitled "Land Community Participation" in this peer-reviewed environmental communication journal. Here's the biggest problem. The early decision to exclude the public was hegemonic. It's an oppressive form of power, a closure on the commons. There are better ways to make environmental decisions, such as we've heard. In conclusion, now would be a good time for everyone to lay down their swords, or chainsaws, as they were, and roll up our sleeves and tackle these common goals we have aimed at in... we have aimed at common-sense solutions for land, community, and pipeline safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kent Fittlet. Fickett, I'm sorry. Kathleen Hamm is next.
Hi, my name's Kent Fickett. I'm a resident of Arinda. Lived in Lafayette a few years back. But I'm here representing the Mount Diablo Audubon Society. There's a number of members, and they've asked me to speak. I've been here before. I don't need to cover that ground. I'm here to really talk to the bigger picture, to Lee from the PUC, to the PG&E folks, and indirectly to the city staff. What you're hearing out here is somewhat a frustration with the public process. In California, we have something called the California Environmental Quality Act. It's a, it's used by planners to plan for big projects to make sure that all the issues are vetted in a proper public process by stakeholders so that they can all feel like they've been a part of that process so that decision-makers, such as yourselves, can decide whether to issue permits to folks like the applicants. I think the PUC rang a big gong in San Bruno. And it was a great thing to do in the aftermath of that. And I'm glad to hear that the PG&E folks drank the lemonade on the safety issue and the importance to get that pipeline back in its right shape. But this sounds like, as you hear all these different plans that they have in Maraga, Brione's Park, the Lafayette Reservoir, and the City of Lafayette, like it's a regional infrastructure upgrade project. And you should be doing a broad EIR process on that with the whole community so that the decision-makers are not put in a spot where you come flying in and tell them that you have an emergency exemption. You don't have an emergency exemption. What you're trying to call an emergency exemption is not defined as such under the California Environmental Quality Act and in legal precedent. And I've made this point 14 months ago with this council. And I've heard nothing back from your council explaining how you have justified that you can come in and put the onus on this city, that you have an exemption. You don't have to go through CEQA. If you'd have started the CEQA process last year, you'd have had all those environmental studies done. You'd have had the safety information done. You'd have looked at alternatives like moving the pipeline, which is probably what you should do with a 70-year-old infrastructure project like this one, putting it in a space where it's easy for you to access. It's safer to people, and you don't have to cut a lot of trees. I've got 42 seconds. I'll try to end quickly. Members of the council, PG&E does not have an emergency exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act. The City of Lafayette needs to comply with state law and conduct a review under CEQA. I think some of the ideas about collaborating with community members, maybe even other, other cities, the regional parks and East Bay Mud would be helpful in that regard. The appearance of taking over $500,000 from PG&E as a mitigation to sign an agreement looks like pay-to-play. Using large amounts of that money to go to a road beautification project and nowhere near the pipeline where the, where the impacts supposedly take place looks bad.
Kim, it's fate.
Please keep up your act and comply with state law. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Kathleen Hamm. And then Neil Zelia, or Zeline. Okay, thanks.
Yes, I'm Kathleen Hamm. I live at 1006 Woodbury Road. I've been a resident of Lafayette for about 30 years, but who's counting? In any event, I come at this issue rather late because of an article I recently read in the Contra Costa Times. So, I'm not as well-informed as probably 90% of the people in this room. But I, what I would like to say is, my major concern in the resolution of this issue is public safety. And I think that should be your priority. I'm not informed enough to know what the best way to do that is, if it involves cutting some trees, if, and I'm in favor of that. But whatever those who understand all of these issues better than I do decide is fine, so long as public safety is the number-one priority. So, I'm actually done in less than a minute. Thank you.
Thank you. Neil Zeline, Zelia, I'm sorry, Zella. And then Emily Tamkin.
Yes, my name is Neil Zellen.
Zellen.
My property is located at 3365 McGrory Lane. And it is traversed by the PG&E 191 gas transmission line, an 8-inch line. The line was installed in 1947 per unknown standards of Coast County's gas and electric, and later purchased by PG&E. We understand, given its age, and after various conversations I've, I've had with representatives of PG&E, that it may be decommissioned in the near future and rerouted. If such is the case, why at this time permit a method of maintenance that is challenged by many to be of unsubstantiated benefit and clearly destructive of other public and private assets? Of course, I am concerned about safety as much as any other resident in this city. As I live, my home is very close to this pipeline. Another very pertinent issue, however, for myself and for several others, is that for various reasons, which I'll list below, we are not dependent, but we rely heavily upon the trees that are proposed to be removed. Our house is built on a hillside, the perimeter of which slopes moderately steeply in many directions. The five to six large trees slated to be removed provide needed stability to those slopes. Yes, true replacements may restore similar stability, though decades hence in the Indian, or not a risk that we desire to take. Very large mature oak tree shades our home. Without shading, a large section of the house will become untenably hot, requiring multiple interventions, insulation, windows, shading, et cetera, and further electric costs. These could amount to some very substantial cost to us. Aesthetics. Several of our trees are nearer exceeding 100 years, contributing greatly to the aesthetic values of the property. Factoring in the thermal cooling needs, slope issues, it may result a financial liability of perhaps $200,000-plus to we as individuals. I must say, it is frankly insulting to me and to others that I've spoken to who are in a similar position, that for this, we will be offered two 15-gallon saplings for each tree removed. An additional objection is the inequality of costs. Most of the consequences of tree-cutting will be noted on various publicly-held and PG&E has offered, on various-held properties. And PG&E has-
Ms. Zellen, I need you to wrap up, please.
Has offered remuneration to the city. But multiple private individuals will be experiencing 100% losses to the destruction on their property. In conclusion, we do not think there should be tree-clearing for a project that may not have benefit.
Ms. Zellen, I need you to wrap up.
And the city should explore options such as rerouting via public rights-of-way and replacing with modern safety features.
Okay, Ms. Zellen?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I would add just one last comment.
Uh, there's some, hold on one second. Hold on one second. Is there somebody that wants to see?
In each case, it is, should be contingent upon fair, rational compensation and verification by those parties experiencing disproportionately large costs and devaluations.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks. Okay. Emily Tamkin, who has six minutes. Three minutes, seated by Annette Ungerman. Is that right?
That is right.
Annette is here? Okay.
Okay.
All right, Emily, thanks. Six minutes.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to start by thanking everyone here, thanking PG&E and CPUC and our city council for giving their time to hear us speak today. And I can't wait to be a part of further discussions that will be held at a later event. So, I'm a senior at Campbelllindo High School, and I'm the co-president of our Campbelllindo Environmental Club. I help manage our school garden. I continue to work to establish Campbelllindo's recycling and composting program. And I'm, I'm an intern for the Planet B Foundation that teaches underprivileged students in Oakland about the importance of pollinators. I worked at the Exploratorium for a year, educating the San Francisco public and further members of the public about environmental protection issues. And I won't continue, but I can provide my resume if anyone should need it. I'm going to clear up one common misconception right off the bat. If my voice is wavering today, it is not because I'm nervous. It is because I'm very frustrated. I'm frustrated because in my 17 years in Lafayette, I hope I've made a big difference, and I'm sure that I've made some kind of a difference. But in my next 80 years of working and fighting, I don't know if I'll ever be able to fully nullify the amount of damage that the singular tree-cutting agreement and the interaction that PG&E has with our trees will do and the damage that it poses to our citizens, environment, and our policy. Most importantly, I can't ignore the precedent in this setting, not only in Lafayette, but in our surrounding communities that may look to us as what we've done for a model for their futures. And that is truly heartbreaking. I grew up in Lafayette. I was born at the San Ramon Hospital, and I came home to the house that I still live in today. And I remember distinctly being in the fifth grade at Happy Valley Elementary, right up the block, and having our Lafayette mayor come and speak to us all about his job. He said, "If we work hard enough and we do our best throughout our entire lives, we can be whoever we want to be, whoever we want to be, and make a difference." However, it seems as this dream has been swept under the rug as our current administration tends to look past the fact of the matter and more of the money of the matter. So, this issue is not just about a few trees. As Waldo Emerson said, "Every particular in nature, a leaf, a drop, a crystal, a moment of time, is related to the whole and partakes in the perfection of the whole." This is an issue that sets a dangerous precedent for the behavior of a city and their cooperation with a corporation. This is about constituents asking our elected officials and the two different corporations that are supposed to be protecting our public safety to stand up and make a difference. Citizens' homes are being devalued, and with them, the priceless natural integrity of Lafayette. I have a couple of questions that, I don't know if you want to get some pens ready for later comment, but we've heard you all say that tree roots have the potential to cause corrosion. I was wondering if there was any factually-supported evidence or test trials, anything done to support the effective claim that tree roots do cause corrosion? I would like to address Mr. Palmer of the CPUC. I heard you mention earlier that your goal is to minimize pipeline damage down to zero. And I was wondering if we could get an on-the-record public comment about the fact that since the San Bernardino incident, their, their rate of incident, especially in Lafayette, has shot up with about 27 dig-ins in the last year alone. And I want to know why we are targeting the trees instead of looking at the real issues. And I would also like to hear from PG&E about the fact that, from what we see in documentation online and in previous evidence, there has never been an accident directly caused by a tree in our community. And no, and I would also like a quick comment on the fact that we can talk all we want about public safety and everything, but the fact of the matter is that no, no Lafayette pipelines have ever been inspected with a pig, which is the most reliable form of checking a pipeline for corrosion or, I don't know. I would like to add the fact that I'm not a pipeline expert. I think Mr. Burks, or Burks, sorry, mentioned that at the beginning. I'm not an expert on pipeline safety. And I'm a little confused as to why we don't have any third-party unbiased pipeline safety experts here to comment on that. And a third question, or I don't know what number I'm at. But a number, whatever question I have, is do those 12 pipeline safety factors that, upon which you judge the trees, have to do with the pipeline itself or the aerial plane checks that you mentioned? And I guess, okay. I would also like to mention that the final two points of the ISO 55001, I think it's a standard mentioned by Mr. Singh. Thank you for being here. Our perform, the final two points, so number nine and 10, are performance evaluation and improvement. And I was wondering how we're looking to accomplish those last two checkpoints of your guys' stated goals here today. And if I leave you with here with anything today, it's that the youth are the future. And I speak through, if I can speak for all the youth here, we will continue to fight the tree-cutting policies until each and every one of you can honestly look at me in the eye and tell me that you're working in the best interest factually of myself and my fellow constituents, my fellow students, and our trees. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Emily. I have a, I have a slip from Cheryl McDonald. She wanted to see time to Michael Dawson. Mr. Dawson has already had his six minutes. But Cheryl, would you like to speak? I don't know if Cheryl's here. She left? Okay, thank you. So, Dave Smith is next, followed by Sidney Bagley. Mr. Smith.
Hi, my name is Dave Smith, and I live at 1729 Relise Valley Road. I wanted to thank everyone for having this meeting to really, hopefully, this is the beginning of a much larger conversation. I've heard a lot of language used here around working together, common ground, and striking a balance. And in each of these cases, it really goes to the idea of how do we actually create a process by which greater collaboration can exist between the city, between PG&E, and between our residents? With this intent in mind, I really would urge PG&E and the City of Lafayette to mutually stop the tree-cutting agreement from 2017. My professional experience has really been in collaborative solutions and cross-sector collaboration. What we've learned through this is that, as was said earlier, process really does determine outcomes. And if we want collaboration versus confrontation, we need to think of an alternative process. And we have some great ones to, to build from. Ultimately, I do want to commend and join the Save Lafayette Trees organization and urge the city to set up a citizen advisory group to reduce the number of pipeline safety accidents and the risk to Lafayette while protecting our natural environment. Ultimately, it's through dialogue that we're able to build trust, and that will yield greater collaborative solutions. Public engagement often has multiple paths. One of which is to exhaust and ultimately talk past each other. A lot of these kind of opportunities where you have three minutes at the mic, and you can't even really respond to the question, but at the end you can, you know, provide some other response, is more like this former versus how do we actually sit down and engage, listen, learn, and respond? This is ultimately a way to build trust. And there's some great examples of this that are highlighted in a publication called Golden Governance. It's actually put out by the Davenport Institute. It shows a lot of best practices in, in this kind of approach, as well as the Davenport Institute itself provides grants and connections to different facilitators who can actually bring people together to create a cross-sector conversation. What we need here is cross-sector leadership. We need to find a win-win-win. And to do that, we need to prioritize safety, our natural environment, and really build trust between our residents, PG&E, and the City of Lafayette. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Smith. Sidney Bagley, followed by Barbara Williams.
Hi, I'm Sidney Bagley, and I live at 3190 Somerset Drive. I'm going to review an email sent by Jim Blickenstaff, a board member on the Mount Diablo Sierra Club, and sent to the Lafayette City Council. The Sierra, the Sierra Club has reviewed the, reviewed the proposed tree-cutting plan by PG&E and the city cooperation under the tree-cutting agreement, and has concluded that cutting down over 200 healthy and/or mature and/or heritage trees in the Lafayette proper is not justified. And the City of Lafayette would be well-advised to cancel its cooperative agreement with PG&E. Analysis demonstrates that so-called "safety" is not a governing issue. The misrepresentation on the issue alone is disturbing. In fact, a case can be made that the safety will actually be diminished overall for the proper running and maintenance of PG&E infrastructure as hundreds of millions of customers' dollars are devoted/ diverted to a massive Brione's Lafayette tree removal project at the expense, at the expense of an array of other more deserving safety matters. In fact, while tree removal may facilitate a more convenient above-ground operation benefit for PG&E, the underground consequences of dead and rotting tree roots could actually add to future degradation of those pipes. Convenience is no justification for destroying hundreds of mature, many of which are heritage stature, and most of significant, of most significant environmental value. These trees are not a nuisance. They are not a danger, and they are not the problem. The problem is obvious. We should, the City of Lafayette should take the necessary steps to not be a cooperative partner in the problem. It's Sierra Club's position that Lafayette should rescind the PG&E tree-cutting/destruction agreement and reinstate the trees, the city's tree-protection ordinance. As Lorax says, "I speak for the trees." Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Barbara Williams, followed- Barbara Williams, followed by Kelsey Levante.
Hi, thank you. I'm Barbara Williams, I live at 1055 Los Arubis Lane in Lafayette. Much of what I wanted to say has really already been very well-covered, so I think on behalf of a lot of us, I want to thank the Dawsons and Save Lafayette Trees for pulling together the information that a lot of us wouldn't have had the time to do, and put it together in a way that it makes sense to us. I think just a couple of observations from the information that's been shared so far. I'm really nervous, there's not a shut-off valve anywhere near my house according to the map I saw, so that makes me concerned. So it seems that the information given from the Pellegrini's about first responders won't get near it speaks to having more shut-off valves. Pipe testing is a concern, and the concern, I think, is also that the discrepancy in the PG&E slide saying you've tested all the pipes and other information saying you haven't. I think the last one that was almost comical was Allison Hill's comment about an exposed pipeline for, oh, maybe forty-nine years, and yet we've got pipeline patrols, people walk in the pipeline, how does that occur? So going to that, it just seems like the information given on both sides doesn't match up, which I think speaks to concern that we're not dealing with all the facts, and it leads me to say I really hope you stop the agreement, and let's, as Dave Smith said, you know, let's get together and find a way to work this through to pull together the real facts and figure out what's going on, so we don't take down twelve-hundred trees just on a get-go. So, anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kelsey Levante has six minutes, three minutes seated by Lorna. Is Lorna here?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And before, Kelsey, before you start, we have about thirty minutes or so more public comment to go. So just as a quick time check, it is 6:15. I do want to give PG&E an opportunity to respond. I do, though, think that it's incredibly important that the folks from our community who came tonight have the opportunity to express their comments and some concerns. So I am impartial to our community providing those concerns, and then maybe finding, because we do have to stop at seven, working towards potential solution alternatives and ensuring that you have an opportunity to respond as well. And I would just ask my colleagues very quickly if they have any input before we, yeah?
Well, I do. Vice Mayor, I think you're right on target. The community needs to speak, I know PG&E is taking notes, and if they only have a few minutes just to kind of give a general response, I think that would be suitable for tonight. I wouldn't expect them to go through all of what we've heard and answer it all, and I really think we're talking about either another meeting or another session where we have an opportunity to get a lot more information from PG&E about these particular questions, and maybe even a little more dialogue between all of us. So I support you, let's make the community the priority at this point.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Mitchell, do you have any?
I'm also supportive.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so Kelsey, you've got six minutes, thanks for your patience.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Kelsey Levante, I live at 686 St. Mary's Road.
Kelsey, if you could just get a little closer to the microphone, that'd be great.
And I won the 2017 Environmental Excellence Award, given by Assemblywoman Catherine Baker. And I actually work with the previous three students that have spoken, Claire, Sabri, Emily Tamkin, and Sidney Bagley, and we all are part of the environmental club at our local high school. And so I just want to say, in a time where we are bombarded with fake news and corrupt agencies, it is our job as citizens to make sure that we keep organizations in check. Don't let ambiguous phrases like "for safety concerns" make you back down. Which "safety concerns"? Give us data and give us evidence. Do your research and find the truth. It is amazing to see all of you are out here today, seeing that we are all fighting against misinformation that is being provided to the public by PG&E. This solution that PG&E has presented is simple and poorly thought-out, an overreaction directed at the wrong source, sort of like blaming a candle when an unattended candle burns down a house. Also, I just wanted to make sure you are all aware of this, but a bill requiring customers to bail PG&E out for liabilities stemming from the 2017 NorCal fires is now on the governor's desk awaiting his signature. And PG&E has issued a statement that called this bill "a commonsense solution that puts the needs of wildfire victims first and protects electric customers." Hmm, interesting. I feel that this sums up the, I should call it, destructive company that we are working with here. I suggest that we pay more closer attention to what is going on with this organization. Also, I have a quick note to PG&E. As the citizens of Lafayette, we have put up a lot of posters that are trying to bring awareness about what's going on, but they happen to be taken down often. I mean, I put up like ten myself, and just wondering if you all knew where they went. So, also, PS, I do have a group of students who are willing to spend a couple months sitting in trees if need be. Us youth are not giving up on our earth to myopic ignorant adults. Also, so also with my remaining three and a half minutes, I have a letter from AccuFAX, which is called "AccuFAX Evaluation of PG&E Assertions of Gas Pipelines: Safety Dangers from Trees in Lafayette, California." So AccuFAX Inc. was asked to review assertions by PG&E that the trees along PG&E's gas pipeline system within Lafayette pose a safety danger. PG&E claims the situation within their pipeline system is somehow unique and merits that the pipeline right-of-way is be sterilized by widespread removal of trees under the misguided claim of safety. AccuFAX finds PG&E claims regarding tree threats to pipelines within Lafayette at best to be, or at best, sorry, disingenuous, pardon me, and at worst, false. There are many miles of pipeline right-of-ways rows spanning the US that contain trees. PG&E is not the only pipeline operator that has trees in their rows. Despite PG&E's various attempts to misinform, the Pipeline and Hazard Material Safety Administration, or PHMSA, which is responsible for federal pipeline safety regulations, has no safety regulations prohibiting trees in pipeline rows. While there may be a few trees across the US that might be a legitimate safety concern, the reality is that there are very few in number. Bottom line, PG&E is overstating the risk of trees to their pipelines, especially those in Lafayette. It is my opinion that PG&E is attempting to accomplish another agenda that has little, if anything, to do with the pipeline safety. PG&E natural gas pipelines spanning Lafayette are small-diameter, lower-stress pipelines that are not likely to rupture, and even if they catastrophically break, the impact zone is small, limited by the laws of thermodynamics. The presence of trees should not hamper leak surveys, as they are technologies that can determine gas leaks through foliage, and this technology has been available for at least a couple decades. While I commend the citizens of Lafayette for attempting to establish meaningful constructive dialogue with PG&E, it is difficult to establish a productive relationship when a pipeline operator is so bent on not telling the truth. I would advise the citizen and the city slash-county representatives to petition the California Public Utilities Commission to suspend that part of the Community Pipeline Safety Initiative that they have approved affecting Lafayette and similarly affected communities that PG&E is attempting to use to justify tree removal. A more factual and informed public discussion needs to occur that gets to the truth concerning trees, gas pipelines, and right-of-way issues, especially as they relate to Lafayette. AccuFAX Inc. has over four decades of experience and provides consolation to various local, state, and federal agencies, NGOs, the public, and pipeline industry members on pipeline safety regulation, operation, maintenance, design, and risk management, with particular emphasis on operation in unusually sensitive areas of high-population density or environmental sensitivity. Richard B., President of AccuFAX Inc.
Thank you very much. Susan Callister, followed by Mike Minelli.
This is going to be a hard act to follow, but I do know we have good schools now. I'm feeling pretty good. That's an old line to draw on.
I'm Susan Callister, I live in Lafayette. I was going to represent the Lafayette Homeowners Council, but I think Carol Singer's going to do that tonight. I'd like to, first of all, thank the PG&E folks and CPUC folks that came. How many people in the audience are from PG&E tonight? Raise your hands. Yeah, I thought you had your section behind. We used to do that when I had hearings at Chevron. It helps out when you get slammed, huh? You got the people behind you telling us okay. Anyway, the post-San Bruno thing that you went through, I noticed that PG&E made a lot of changes in their upper management. In particular, they brought in Jesus Solo for the Senior Vice President of Gas Operations, and it looked like he had considerable experience down in Houston area, and I was impressed with that, also with a gentleman named Mel Christopher. Today's PG&E reps here and CPUC reps, I appreciated what you had to say. In particular, Ms. Chapman, in fact, I told her as I came in, I read one of your papers with a few other colleagues, I forget the name of the journal, but there were other people from other companies, and one of the things that you said on the risk is allowing for assessing trade-offs, and you said there was this three-legged stool, safety, reliability, and cost. And I think when you use that three-legged stool and analyze the proposed tree-removal program, probably won't be something that you're going to want to do. So, have there been any gas line failures that can be attributed to tree roots? None that we really know of. Are there any regulations requiring removal of tree roots for gas lines? None that I can find. And look through the federal regulations and CPUC, you're the one that implement the regs that PG&E has to follow, and I think you believe there aren't any. So what do we do? What I ask is that you take, the city takes the $500,000 that you gave it for the tree-removal program, they give it back to you, and you all work on some new programs for remote shut-off valves, and any other things that you need to do within our community to make the system better. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mike Minelli, followed by Rob Sturm.
Hi, I'm Mike Munley, and I live at 1068 North Thompson Road. So I brought to you a little picture, it's actually of an ad, it's the top one for you people who are older, you know, the grizzled types, huh? There's a grizzly bear, it's a Chevron ad, and it was part of their "People Do Care" campaign. In other words, it was like Chevron cared about the environment. The story was that they, you know, they would go in and drill for gas and stuff in the wintertime when the bear was hibernating, right? Not disturb it, and then they would leave, and everything would be happy, and the cub would run around, and, you know, hey, everything was good, right? They cared, like, people love bears, and, you know, we love Chevron, and they're doing a great job, right? Yeah, well, as we know, right, global warming and stuff, yeah, they knew about it then, too. So, you know, not exactly the most honest company. So, anyway, the connection is, is like PG&E is running similar ads today, right? Just like, I don't know, they must have hired the same, you know, advertising company, because, you know, here they got, you know, instead of bears, they got, you know, firefighters. Oh, everyone loves firefighters, I mean, they do a great job. And, you know, so this is what we want, we want to show you that we're protecting the public, we got the firefighters on our side, and what we're going to do, we're going to mow down these trees around the, across, you know, get them out of the way of the pipeline, it's going to make everyone safe. And, you know, the folks from our community who've done the research, Save Lafayette Trees, you know, they've done their homework, and they found, yeah, that's not going to provide any benefit. So what is the benefit? What, you know, it's a publicity scam. It's like, okay, people are going to see that trees have been mowed down, right? It's not going to provide any safety, but it looks like, it looks like it's safe, yeah? You know, roots, I mean, they tear up the, they're going to tear up the pipeline, cause it explode. I don't buy that, I don't think, you know, anyone in our community buys that after being educated. And so what would make me feel safe? You know, you talked about best practices, right? Well, we live in earthquake country, and, you know, I'm fearful not of roots, you know, cracking the pipe, I'm fearful of an earthquake shattering that steel pipe that's brittle from all these years, seventy years old or whatever, right? So I want to see some shut-off valves, right? And, you know, you mentioned you had one that's proposed for the city of Lafayette. You know, you just, you just spent, you know, time digging up St. Mary's Road, you put a brand-new pipeline in, and it's larger than ever before, right? And you didn't put a shut-off valve. You're not doing the right job.
Mr. Minelli, we need you to wrap up, please.
All right, I'll end now. You know, you're not doing the right thing, you guys are burning fossil fuel, we got climate change going on, you guys got to clean up your act. Start with, you know, clean fuel, okay? I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Sturm, Rob Sturm, followed by Joseph Chami.
Hi, I'm Rob Sturm, I live at 3343 Oak Court, and I've lived in Lafayette since 2009. I want to thank PG&E and the city council for convening and for presenting today. I also want to personally thank Gina and Mike Dawson for the work that they have done on making our community more aware. We are fortunate to have them here and their passion. I view the PG&E agreement to be a mistake, a simple mistake that can be corrected through rescission. I, too, thought I might be here on behalf of the Lafayette Homeowners Council, but I anticipate that Carol will pick up the torch there. I will simply comment that the homeowners council has twice unanimously approved rescission, and it's difficult to get that group to agree unanimously on anything, so that says a lot. I also happen to be the head of litigation for one of Northern California's largest property and casualty insurers. I have very deep awareness of the litigation that has occurred in both San Bruno and Butte Fire, and now the Northern California Fires. I speak here as a member of the community only, not in my capacity, in my work, professional capacity, or on behalf of my employer, I want to make that clear. I also speak here only with respect to documents that are public, the pleadings that have been filed that are available to anyone. I have reviewed a lot of documents, and I have never seen any of them that have referenced any issues with respect to tree roots, none. There are real safety issues that do exist with PG&E, and we should be focusing on those, but this is a red herring in my view. I believe the PG&E folks here are good people, and I appreciate them coming. PG&E does really good work in some areas, notably, for example, diversity and inclusion. PG&E is a rock star, and they are a true corporate leader. However, when it comes to integrity and prioritizing profits, their record is not so good. I do not know of another public company, it may exist, but I do not know of one, that has had felony findings against it in San Bruno, both before and obstruction of justice after the explosion. The reality is that credibility is low. Cal Fire has already issued reports on all but the Tubbs Fire and the North Cal Fires, and in all of those, they have found PG&E equipment to be responsible. In most of those, they have issued notices to the district attorney based on negligence for further processing by them. I believe that we should rescind the agreement- I believe that we should rescind the agreement, like most of the others who have spoken, and we should start over in a manner that properly balances reality and the interests of PG&E and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Joseph Shami, followed by Carol Singer.
I am Joseph Shami, 909 Carl Road, Lafayette, which is near the, what was the beginning of the Lafayette Maraga Trail. It's the end that's now near Pleasant Hill Road. And the single issue that brought me here is the cutting of the trees on the Lafayette Maraga Trail. I want to emphasize how important that trail is as a recreation facility to very many of us. I was a runner, a long-distance runner, 40 years ago, living in Lafayette, and I heard there was a new trail. It was only four and a half miles long in Lafayette, but I had to run it. I ran it 11 times, and I bought a house near the beginning of it then, and for 40 years it has been my recreational facility. Many of my best friends I met on that Lafayette Maraga Trail. So, it's not just a safe means of getting the children safely to school. It's a linear park. It was transformed from a railroad bed as a way of getting our children safely to school, and I believe it was the first rails-to-trails in the United States. I may be wrong on that, but it was certainly one of the very first. And the trail was so beautiful 40 years ago, even though it was only four and a half miles long, that I came to live here. I made 11 offers on my house, they turned them all down except the last one, which was their asking price. And, this is, I was in Boston in 1979 alone on a subway platform, and a stranger, total stranger, came up to me and said, "You're from Lafayette, California, and you're here to run the Boston Marathon." And I said, "How do you know?" He said, "I'm from Lafayette, too, and I see you running all the time on the Lafayette Maraga Trail, and I'm going to run the Boston Marathon, too." So, this is a quite well-known trail. It's one of, if not the most beautiful of all the East Bay Regional Park trails. It's certainly one of the most beautiful with all its trees. And I was heartbroken when I heard of the number of trees that were going to be removed, making it almost a desert, I thought. And even at 207 trees, I mean, the trail is seven and a half miles long. I don't know if the pipeline covers all seven and a half miles. Maybe it's only four miles. But even if it does cover seven and a half miles, 207 trees, there's still a lot of trees to remove in seven and a half miles, and it's certainly a lot if it's only four miles. So, I say that it's worth spending the money to find a solution to give us a safe pipeline without destroying the trees and the beauty of the area.
Mr. Shami, thank you very much. Okay, Carol Singer, followed by Vern Matisson.
Finally, this is the Carol that they've been referring to. 3461 South Silver Springs Road, but I'm speaking as the current president of the Lafayette Homeowners Council, which represents 44 homeowners' associations in Lafayette. I thank you all for this workshop. I think it's been very valuable, and I do agree it needs to go on, maybe have a direct conversation instead of just questions and this kind of a format. We have written two letters to the City Council, and they're on the back table, both of them. In the interest of time, I won't read the current letter, which is rather long, but I would like to read an excerpt from it. And we have asked that the city return the approximately $500,000 that PG&E gave to the city as part of this agreement, an agreement that was entered into without review and input from the citizens of Lafayette. Lastly, we ask that the city insist that these monies be applied to a much-needed upgrade to gas lines, provide automatic shut-off valves that work from control rooms, and train personnel to improve PG&E's compliance with established safety standards. We also support, fully support, the formation of a Citizens Advisory Committee as proposed by Save Lafayette Trees this past May. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Vern Matisson, followed by Jennifer Schick.
I'd say everyone said it all. I'll just have mine staying on. There's nothing more you could say.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I have a different thanks for sitting over to the side of the field.
Okay, all right, thank you, Vern. Jennifer, followed by Allison Candell.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Schick. I live at 928 Janet Lane. I first want to say that I have a little bit of experience. When I was younger, I worked as a contractor for PG&E with their electrical distribution system, looking at trees, talking to property owners, assessing risk. And, I know this is not going to be a popular opinion, but I would urge my fellow citizens to consider the removal of smaller and younger trees in that gas pipeline area. Those trees are going to grow, they're going to change, they can affect the pipes. But I want to talk about the older and larger trees that are slated to be removed. First of all, I feel like the access issue has been discussed by local first responders, and I think that they've made a very good argument that access is not really an issue in this area. But if access is not an issue, then what is the issue? The issue is the roots, the underground system. So, I want to know, if they're going to remove these trees, are they also going to be removing the root systems, or are they not? And if they are, then why not just install a new pipeline down the center of the trail if you're going to be digging up your pipeline anyway? And if they are not going to remove the roots, then all you've done is change a relatively stable system. These trees absorb a lot of moisture, and in the winter, when it rains, they take up a lot of moisture from the soil, and it helps to reduce flooding. If you remove those trees, that moisture is going to remain in the soil, and it could result in soil movement, and it could result in corrosion. So, I submit that removing these trees will actually submit us to a greater risk of damage to the existing pipeline. Therefore, I want PG&E to release the city of Lafayette from the agreement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. And Allison Candell. And Allison is our last speaker for the evening.
Hi, I'm Allison Candell. I live at 1352 Martina Road over by Spring Hill. I am also a graduate from UCLA with a degree in environmental science. I read a report by the Independent Review Panel on the San Bruno explosion that was submitted to the CPUC. This report stated that, as a result of the investigation, the panel concludes that the explosion of the pipeline at San Bruno was a consequence of multiple weaknesses in PG&E's management and oversight of the safety of its gas transmission system. From the public comments and reports that have been shown today, especially the fact that 60% of our 70-year-old pipelines have not been tested recently, or at all, I'm concerned that the circumstances that led to the explosion in San Bruno are occurring right now. Cutting down the trees are not going to fix these structural problems, and I feel like we're spending a lot of time and energy and money talking about the solution when it's probably not going to be as effective as other solutions would be. In addition, I'm also well-versed in CEQA requirements, and it really doesn't make any sense to me at all that PG&E has claimed exemption on this project. And for the sake of time, I'm going to cut my report short there.
That's okay, you get.
That's okay.
Sure, okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so, thank you very much. I just like to thank everybody in the room. This is a large showing and a lot of heartfelt comments, so thank you very much. I'd like to turn it over now, back to PG&E. We've got about 25 minutes or so. I'd like to give you the floor. I would like to keep about five minutes or so for the PUC to provide a statement at the end, if you'd like, as well. Back to PG&E, not only do I want to give you the floor in terms of responding however you want to, I know we don't have a lot of time, and I apologize for that, but I would like to urge you, if you have any suggestions for future engagement, so we could, as Council Member Anderson suggested, so we could perhaps revisit a lot of what was said tonight to have some back and forth. If you have any recommendations for a forum or a type of engagement like that, I think it would be good for all of us to hear it, but again, it's up to you how you want to respond to that. So, Mr. Singh and your folks, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, the residents of Lafayette, for your passion and your heartfelt comments. They really resonated, and a lot of things that you've talked about and you've mentioned, many of you mentioned the characterization of PG&E. And what I can tell you is, there's 24,000 men and women behind that. And the fact that that's the sentiments that have been expressed to us, is a self-realization that we need to show up in a different way. So, thank you for that. It was very humbling, sitting here for the last hour and a half, really appreciating the comments and the passion and the sentiments that have been expressed. There's probably four or five pages of notes that I have, and I write in font size four. So, I'm sure my colleagues here have a lot more comments and questions as well. So, I wasn't anticipating in these comments to go through each of those points one by one. Several of the comments that you touched upon are included in the responses we've provided. I understand it doesn't touch on every single item that was put forward, but it does provide some facts regarding the concerns that were put forward regarding damage prevention, regarding the increase in the failure rates over the last five years. I won't regurgitate those. That's my ask, is to look at those, and if those are not clear, we are open to discussing how best we can follow up on those items. I mean, those were the remarks that I wanted to make, Vice Mayor, and there's a lot of notes that we've taken. We can go back, coalesce our notes, and ensure that we're being responsive to these comments that have been put forward in another forum or in writing, but I would look to some guidance from the council members here and the residents, because clearly the way we have engaged with this community has not hit the mark. So, as opposed to us dictating what that should be, I want to hear some input in what your suggestions are, because we are committed to working with you, and I sincerely mean that. I wouldn't be here, and this team wouldn't be here if we didn't mean that.
Okay, thank you. Council Member Mitchell has a question.
Yes, I do have a question. Both CPUC and yourselves have talked about engaging with the public, and I really wanted to focus on the CPUC first. You'd both talked about the three-legged stool with public input being a part of that. So, from a CPUC perspective, how would that happen, public engagement? What is the processes that you have in place, and how can it be applied specifically to our situation here?
Well, so, at the CPUC, there's many ways for the local community to get involved, and one of them is to become part of a proceeding. One of them is to show up at a commission meeting. You can speak on behalf of your community at the commission meeting. We, at the CPUC, we are committed to hearing what the local community has to say, because we're part of it as well. And I know that's been said a lot today, but there's ways to get involved. I heard a lot of passion in this room as well to take a word, and we are nothing without our local community. That being said, the most effective way is to, which is a bureaucratic system, I'm not going to hide behind it, but to go down the proceeding route. And the CPUC is not in the business of managing easements or right-of-ways. That being said, we take seriously the relationship that a utility we regulate has with its community. We want that to be a solid relationship, and if that means that we come to further workshops or that we host further workshops, then so be it, and we're more than happy to go down that route.
Okay, so, let's speculate that a number of people from Lafayette want to talk to the CPUC. How would that happen? It might not be the most effective to show up to another public meeting. Is Mr. Pedar, is that part of his job to work with the public, to meet with the public, to provide?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I'm a local government liaison, so my role is to be working with you folks and the community members, to bring feedback to the commission, to help better inform decisions moving forward. So, as my colleague Lee said, the best way to do that is through formal channels, through our proceeding process. And so, that's what, we're always taking comments from the public to make that more reflective of the communities that we serve.
Can you describe that process and also possibly with respect to, it's my understanding that there's a safety assessment currently being engaged by the CPUC, is that accurate?
Yes.
As it relates here. So, can you relate to us how specifically the public can get involved? You said that there is a process. Can you tell us how that happens?
Yes, I mean, if, you know, we can, oh, Lee, do you want to speak to that, as far as, you know, for safety?
But not just the assessment that's coming out, but how the public would engage with the CPUC to get a better understanding of the report and voice questions that they might, the public might have.
Well, we've already met with the Dawsons. Thank you very much for that meeting, and that can definitely be arranged. They actually spoke with me right on the phone. The report is publicly available now, it is publicly posted, and you can go ahead, pull it down. Any comments, or not revisions, but comments that you have on that report can be asked of us directly, and the points of contact are on the report, and they will be answered. Based off that, we welcome additional meetings as well, where you can come to the commission or we can come to you, and we can sit down and maintain that dialogue. And if a proceeding is the route that you wish to go, then we will speak on your behalf to get support for that proceeding and move down that path. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. What I'm, you can see I'm driving at here, is sort of a commitment of how you're going to work with the public and in the most efficient way, you know, and that satisfies the needs that everybody seems to be expressing here.
The commitment that the PC will make right here today is that we will continue to participate in these workshops regardless, that we will continue to show up, that we will continue to speak on behalf of not only the backings of our general orders, but the local communities as well, that we want to be here and be a part of this process, that if you don't feel that you've been properly represented, if you don't feel that you have been properly engaged by the utility, it may not necessarily be 100% the utility's fault, and we, the PUC, have a part in that as well, and we want to be a part of fixing that process.
Okay. And I'm kind of embarrassed to say this, but I don't know how to reach you people. Do you have a local office here, or do we need to go to San Francisco, or how does that work?
You absolutely do not need to go to San Francisco, but that is the closest office to you, sir. But we are available online as well, and I'd be more than happy to give you my business card when we follow this as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Well, I don't know if CPUC wants to say, make a statement about what you've seen or heard tonight. This maybe would be a chance to do that. I don't know if you have anything you want to say about it, because I have some questions, but go ahead if you want. Excellent, okay. Excellent, okay. So, I'm really feeling like, at this point, we really kind of need to unbind where we are right now with PG&E. We've worked a lot on this, city council and PG&E, we've had a lot of meetings. It seems that I remember there being some kind of a deadline or some kind of a processing issue around the actual execution of the project. There was money or expectation from CPUC that it had to be done by a certain time. I'm questioning that, and I'm also suggesting that maybe the first step is to somehow undo that, release that constraint on us having some time to work out a better solution. We're going to eat after this for five minutes. Maybe five minutes to go.
Maybe.
So, I'd like to, you know, consider, if we can, give us a time to maybe release or unbind the process, get it off of a deadline. I like the idea of a Citizens Advisory Committee, hoping that's something you might be familiar with and be willing to work with us on. I have no problem with the city returning the mitigation money that's been submitted, if that's going to help you feel better about the process. I'm getting hungry. But it seems to me that we really need to start looking at a new process for this particular situation in this city. Hopefully, you agree with me on that. And as I say, I think as a deadline was one of the things I remember hearing, the money may be or may not be an issue, but I think that's easy, we can do that. A Citizens Advisory Committee on this particular situation that we have, I think would be very useful for our citizens to get really engaged in the process of deciding how we're going to deal with the issues here in the city. And obviously, we had to set some kind of a timeline for getting this all resolved, something reasonable. But the first thing would be just to get us off any deadline there may be for the current project. So, if you would consider that, that to me would be a great next step. And I would hope that we can put this on our next agenda, regardless of whether we actually have PG&E and CPUC here, just to see if other folks have any comments about this process going forward. And if you have a response by the 24th of September, that'd be great. If not, let's have some kind of dialogue where we can figure out if this is a way that might be possible. So, that would be, hopefully, what we can pursue.
For PG&E, I don't know if you have a response to Councilmember Anderson's comments?
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. We're not asking the city to return the dollars. I know that was requested, you made a comment to that as well. From my perspective, not necessarily going to help the process.
Okay.
I'll let the city make that decision. That's your decision. In regards to the deadline and some of the other items that you've spoken to regarding the Citizens Advisory Committee, we're open to the continued engagement with the city as well as the CPUC and the Safety and Enforcement Division that provides the safety oversight of our pipeline system. And we're committing to continuing that engagement on a path forward and a resolution forward to ensure it meets the expectations of yourself, the CPUC, as well as the residents of Lafayette.
That's great, I appreciate it. And the only thing that you didn't address that I want, I believe there was some deadline for this project. Have I misstated that, or?
My apologies, Councilman.
That's all right.
Initially, when we promulgated the project, it was envisioned to be a five-year project that was commenced in 2012. Obviously, we're in year six now, anticipating some of the issues that we need to continue to work through with some of the various cities, counties, as well as environmental agencies. We're committed to ensuring we're identifying the risk and moving forward, but mitigating that risk, but we can work with you in regards to the timeline.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, and to the PUC, anything else on your end? No? Okay. I would like to invite our city attorney. Do you have any comments? Okay. Okay, to wrap up, I think, I agree with Councilmember Anderson, I think we should agendize this topic for our next meeting. Councilmember Mitchell, if you concur?
I will not be at our next meeting. I will be in Boston, but we can still have the meeting, not take any official action as a council, but still meet with all the parties then, hopefully make some forward progress.
Okay. Yeah, I agree. I think, so to allow for additional public comment would certainly be a goal. I think in the interim, we can work with staff to engage with the PUC and PG&E on alternatives to come up for future engagement, specifically with the PUC, and I'm interested, more intrigued in what you said, in the interest of time. I have some questions associated with it, maybe we can do those offline, and then bring those back to the public at our next meeting. But I guess I would like to close then by just saying, you know, tonight was, yes. First, attorney? Yep.
I just wanted to point out that if Councilmember Mitchell was not able to attend the next meeting, we would only have two councilmembers present, because Mayor Tadson and Councilmember Sampson have conflicts.
That's right.
So, I would suggest that you set it for a meeting when all three of you are available.
Will do. Thank you for that. Okay. Okay, I would like to close by just, again, thanking members from PG&E and the PUC for spending the time with us tonight and being active listeners, being partners. I do believe very strongly that, you know, our relationship with both organizations, as a city, as a community, need to be functional, they need to be positive, they need to move in the right direction. We've had very robust dialogue and comments tonight from folks that have been very candid, and I appreciate your willingness to listen to them. Tonight was not intended to be a silver bullet in terms of, you know, a first step or a clean slate forward, but I believe that the more dialogue that we do have, and in different ways, different formats, I know everybody wasn't happy with tonight's format, but that the more progress we will make at the end of the day in the best interest of the city and public safety. And tonight was certainly 100% about public safety and PG&E and for the PUC, and for the members of the community that came forward, I want to thank you for your interest in that. So, with that, we will end this item, and we will wait for the mayor to come back to continue the meeting. Thank you.
[applause]
[inaudible]
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 [inaudible]